All right, we're gonna get started. Hi, everyone, this is the Select Board meeting for Stowe on March 22, 2022. Before I ask for public comment, just please, a reminder that Stowe TV is recording this session. All members of the board, except for Zach Burns, are present, so if votes are unanimous, I will not ask for a roll call. And if you are interested in commenting, if you're on Zoom, if you would raise your hand with the little icon, and identify yourself and your street address, and try to limit your remarks to two minutes or less. And I'm guessing our town clerk would like to kick us off. Linda?
Hi, hi. Can you all hear me?
Yes, oh yeah.
Oh, sorry, I won't yell. So I just wanted to remind everybody who's out there listening and watching tonight that the census forms are due. I've got 600 households that haven't returned them, so that's still 20% of the ones we sent out haven't been returned. Dog licenses are due by April 15. We're going to have a rabies vaccination clinic sponsored by the Neshoba Boards of Health and the Town Stowe Board of Health at the Highway Barn on April 7. And nomination papers, last day to take them out is next week, the 30th, and to turn them in on April 1, Friday. And voter registration is April 22. And trying to think if there's anything else, but we've been pretty busy doing all of these things in our office. And if anybody has any questions, we have more information on the Clerk's webpage or even on the town website about all of these topics.
Great, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, some announcements, let's see, Linda covered most of them. The hazardous waste collection in April is on April 6 and 9. There's more information under the Board of Health website, on the Stowe website. The Neshoba High School District Forum on the High School Project will be on March 30 at 6:00 PM in person at the high school. So I don't know yet if we've heard if it's gonna be recorded, so it will be recorded, good, okay. But we do encourage you to go and hear and share your thoughts. The Randall Library Book Sale is coming up on April 23 and 24. I've seen how many books they have, so be ready if you're a book reader. There's gonna be lots of great opportunities to buy. And they are still taking donations until the 31st. And you should contact the library if you have a lot, and you can probably take them directly over to the community center. I think those are the only announcements I had, anybody else? Yeah?
Nope.
Okay, so we are starting the meeting with two appointments. First, Joe Jacobs. Do we expect, I don't see him on him.
No, he's a reappointment.
Right, so Joe is our Veterans Service Officer, has been for at least several years that I've met him. So he is willing to stay on through next year. So Denise, do you have anything else to say?
Nope.
Glad that he can do it, he shares the position, I believe, with other towns, so I will take a motion.
I move that the Select Board reappoint Joseph Jacobs as the Town's Veteran Services Officer to fill a one-year term from April 1, 2022 through March 31, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, great, thank you, Joe. And next, we have Jeff Beckwith is to the position of part-time Special Police Officer and Special Lake Boone Officer through the end of this year. And I believe Lieutenant, can I call you Lieutenant even if you're not a Lieutenant for Stowe? Officer in a different town, but is here with us, with his family. So Chief, did you want to, first, I guess I want to just shout out to Lee Heron, who has been in the position for 20-some years. I know he's been here, I feel like he's been a Special Police Officer since I moved to town. So thank you, Lee, for all your years, but we're excited to have your replacement. And Chief, I'll let you take it from here.
So last summer, we reached the mandatory age of retirement for police officers, and so he ended his tenure. He served well over 20 years in different positions within the town of Stowe, but 20 years with the Stowe Police Department. So his retirement created an opening down at the Lake Boone and for a Special Patrol Officer, which really has weekend and holiday shifts, as well as engaging the community in any sort of problems down around the lake area, or I should say on Lake Boone. So we started advertising for this, but I still stay in touch with Lee, and I thought it was a lot of value to have him on the Hiring Committee, bring his expertise and knowledge into it. And then as well as our two million point sergeants were on this Hiring Board, as well as our Dispatch Supervisor and a civilian from the Neshoba Area Social Justice Alliance. So everybody came together. We had, again, we had a lot of different resumes. And they interviewed six people to start off with this and recommended three. Jeff scored the highest out of all of them. Doris, Darren, and myself interviewed three for the second round. And again, Jeff scored the highest, and we'd recommend Jeff to do what we was doing and replace him. His flexibility in scheduling with the Fire Department is going to enable him to be able to work the weekends shifts, but also his training and experience is also gonna be able to put him into the cruiser as well. And that's gonna enable another individual to help cover our shift vacancy shifts for vacation or sick time. So it's actually gonna be a great value to us. So I'm here to recommend it for that. Is he here to answer any questions?
Yeah, do you want to say anything? I don't know if anybody has questions, but I'll let you go first.
I'm just happy to be here. Stowe is a great town, I'm excited to have the opportunity to work here. I've heard a lot of good things about it, a lot of good things about the department, so just excited to be taking this step.
Great, great. Well, I just, I think we're really lucky. Thank you, Chief, actually, for laying out in your memo just the depth of the process. It was really helpful, and we're excited to have someone with such qualifications, so really excited to have you. Denise, did you want to add anything?
Nope, I support the recommendation and look forward to getting Jeff on board here.
Great, all right, well then I will take a motion.
Sure. I move that the Select Board appoint Jeffrey Beckwith to the position of Special Police Officer/Special Lake Boone Officer through June 30, 2022, and subject to reappointment thereafter. This appointment is contingent upon final approval from the Town Administrator after review of any reports provided by the Pre-Employment Mental Assessment.
Second.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, welcome. All right, congratulations and thank you. Welcome to Stowe.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to meet you all.
We're gonna do one quick business before we get to our esteemed colleagues here. The Stowe Cleanup Day, we get to do this every year, and we're happy. Jennifer is on the phone, yeah, hi Jennifer. Thank you for bringing this forward. And why don't you just give us the little, the short rundown on what's happening this year?
Yeah, so thanks for having me and thanks for moving me up in the agenda earlier as well. So I've been working with Sandy and Tara Tack, who coordinated the event or organized the event in the past. We're looking to hold it again on a weekend near Earth Day. The proposed dates would be April 30 and May 1. We do, we would keep it very much the same as last year in terms of having the online signup. We had about 150 people sign up in advance last year. We offer a same-day signup as well on the day of, and with the bag pickup at Lower Common on Saturday from 8 to noon. We designed it the same way, so quick grab and go, two tables, 6 to 10 feet apart, so we can kind of keep things distance. All the participants would sign an indemnification waiver. We have a link in our online signup to that, to the town website, and also printed copies available, which worked well last year. Participants can pick up their yellow bags, and they can also look at the map and select the street if their street has already been done. Participants would clean up on that weekend and leave the bags for the Highway Department to pick up the following Monday on May 2. I did reach out to them and give them a heads up, and they didn't have any concerns. I send them the street names of the streets that were cleaned on Sunday, so they know in general where to go. And then we publicized the event through social media, Stowe Independent. And then last year, we also placed five, in years past, we placed five yard signs strategically throughout town, tried to just raise awareness.
Great.
So in terms of changes for 2022, and John is on the line as well here, so we're looking to partner with the Stowe Conservation Trust this year. They're interested in sponsoring the event. I think everyone knows they're the local land trust and a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So they would provide a letter of donation for any materials that we provide to participants. In the past, gloves were provided, we weren't able to do that last year. But this year, we'd be looking into gloves and safety vests. And they'd also help us with promotion. I did want to note Sustainable Stowe reached out, they want to help promote as well this year. And the Neshoba Area Social Justice Alliance had reached out, we're trying to connect. They're also interested, I think they're working with Maynard on an Earth Day town cleanup type event as well. And then we'd also like to hang the banner on 117 if possible this year. We weren't able to do that, I think the truck was out of service last year. So I think that's the proposed changes. With the Stowe Conservation Trust, they do have a request to modify the indemnification waiver, which I think we'd have to follow up on that piece of it.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen. We get that waiver approved by our Town Council, that can't be changed, so. The town's taking the risk, not Stowe Conservation Trust, so that's. So, yeah, I mean, I know that Chief Salyce actually had commented about if vests would be helpful to be if people walking along, especially the busy roads, having some sort of reflective vest. And then, I don't know if you saw, but Superintendent Steve Nado quoted, "They're gonna provide us the areas of town, we need to go pick out the yellow bags. We love this community support, help keep Stowe clean, it's a great help to the department." So I think that's great. So, so yeah, yes, go ahead.
So I just need to comment, we cannot put a banner up, we still do not have our bucket truck, so we will not be able to accomplish that this year.
Okay.
But we're happy to announce it here, and I'm sure, you know, people read the paper, you know, the lawn signs, et cetera, so, great.
Yeah, absolutely, we got a lot of traffic through social media and stuff too.
And people, I think, are starting to look for it, the people who like to do the cleanup, so that's good. All right, any questions? Yes?
In the parquet, it mentioned that they wanted to add the coffee and scones back in. I'm not attending, so it's no better to me, but.
All right, is there gonna be food, the coffee and scones that you used to have, is what Courtney was asking?
We wanted to do that, I had not reached out to Andrew at Emma's, and now unfortunately they're not there. So I'm not sure how that would.
Right, so that maybe not.
I was afraid that was gonna be the answer.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions or comments? All right, then I will take the motion, okay?
I move to permit Jennifer Henderson and other volunteers to use the Lower Common on Saturday, April 30, 2022, between 7:00 AM and 12:30 PM to distribute trash collection bags and protective gear, and conduct the annual Stowe Cleanup from Saturday, April 30, 2022 through Sunday, May 1, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, thank you. Thanks, Jennifer, and to Sandy and Tara in absentia.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
I am putting that in my calendar right now, please don't think I'm rude.
Okay, no, I will not, thank you, all right. So now we're really pleased to have our State Senator Jamie Eldredge and our, not only our State Representative, but our local resident, Kate Hogan, here for our sort of annual conversation around both what's happening at the State House and what's happening in Stowe, and how we can work together. So do you guys have some first thoughts? And I'm hoping you got some questions from the board, but I know I have some, so we can, you want to start?
Sure, yeah, yeah, no, thanks so much for having us, and good to be back to this tradition. I really don't have that much to report on, but I did just want to let you know, obviously, neither the House nor Senate has proposed budget yet, the Senate goes in May. So I'm having my meeting with the Senate Ways and Means Chairman, Mike Roderick, tomorrow morning, so lay out my priorities from, you know, education to protecting, you know, open space, to anti-poverty programs, to affordable housing, and a number of other items. The governor's, the governor obviously did propose his budget in February, and usually the legislature does just better than the governor's numbers, so I'm optimistic that will be the case. And so I just wanted to note, and part of this, of course, is the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, which the legislature passed last session, and it's a five-year implementation. But for, obviously, the Neshoba Regional District, but for Chapter 70, under the governor's proposal, last year, the district received $7.8 million, and the governor's proposal is just a little over $9 million. So that's actually fairly sizable, especially for suburban communities, so that was good to see. On the other hand, again, these are the governor's numbers, but his budget would reduce the regional school transportation, so that's, you know, going the wrong way. I think it's safe to say, usually the legislature has increased that reimbursement, we're not at 100%, but we're trying to get there. So I would hope that would increase. And then often, the biggest impact and the biggest difference for school districts is the regional, excuse me, the special education circuit breaker. So that's something we've consistently increased over the past few years. I know it's a particular burden to smaller school districts. So I'm hoping that's something that we will do better on, again, when the Senate takes up its budget in May. And so I would say, outside of the budget, you know, continue to take up a lot of legislation this session. The end of the session is July 31. Last session, because of the pandemic, we went past July 31, but my sense is we won't. So that means that all sort of substantive legislation needs to pass by July 31, otherwise it's unlikely to pass, so we have, you know, back to the regular deadline. And so outside of the budget, you know, there's healthcare legislation. Really want to commend the House for passing the Work and Family Mobility Act, which is something I've been strongly supportive of, and so I'm urging the Senate to take that bill up to make sure everyone has a driver's license in Massachusetts. So that's certainly something I'm focused on now in the Senate. And the Senate has been focused on some healthcare legislation, including a mental health access bill. I will say, and it was just from yesterday, but I just continue to get so many calls from parents who have kids that are still being boarded in emergency rooms, who have mental health challenges. You know, and these are kids at Emerson Hospital, you know, down the road, or some of the bigger hospitals in Boston. So continuing to hear a lot about that. It was obviously already bad before the pandemic, and it's been made all the more worse. So that's something I'm hoping we can tackle. And then on the environmental front, lots of different pieces of legislation. But I just want to highlight one that actually is carried over from my predecessor, Senator Pam Rezor, the Public Land Preservation Act, it would basically better protect Article 97 conservation land. So it's also known as the No Net Loss Bill, and it just says that if a town or city decides to build or develop on land that is protected by Article 97, that the same amount of land must be found somewhere else in the town, so we're not losing any more land than we already are from development. So I serve as the Senate Lead Sponsor. This is another bill that the House passed last year, and so I'm working to get the bill passed in the Senate as soon as possible. So I know that conservation issues and open space issues are very important to Stowe residents, so that's something that I'm hoping to become law, which would, it's a bill because it was filed by my predecessor, it's been filed for about 30 years now, so hoping this is the year. So, but yeah, that's basically my update. And always proud to present and serve with Representative Kate Hogan, my friend and colleague, and that's my presentation, thank you.
I'll go through, I'm gonna give myself five, so I'll go through and pick and choose, and what I can do is send you a really big old ugly email tomorrow that has a lot of this information on it, because I think it feels like it's been years since we've met. I think it has been, and a lot has happened, but also a lot of legislation has happened. We've had things like ARPA and funding from the federal government that have come our way, and really changed how we're looking at any given year, and how we're bringing resources back to the community. But really and truly, it has been an incredible two years, both in changing all of our lives, and we've all been touched by COVID, and, you know, lives have been changed forever by those people that still suffer from the disease and lives lost. And I always like to begin by noting that, because it has been such an incredible two years. I feel changed by what has happened and what is still going on. And I know everybody else has been as well. And just want to note everyone for carrying on, doing their job, keeping up, and providing what needs, you know, services and needs that people have. But very quickly, I would just like to talk about some of the lessons and some of the ways that we've formed around how we react and how we reacted to COVID. And it really is about moving from a pandemic into an endemic, knock on wood, and all of that, as well as a whole lot of science, but voting. We learned a lot, the ability to pivot our technology and to safeguard elections. So we'll be working on that. We have a bill out, a votes bill out, and that is actually in conference committee now. So we're also awaiting action on our annual town elections. That won't be part of the Votes Act, but I anticipate that there will be, there will be some legislation that comes, not necessarily with the Votes Act, but before we leave for July 30 and elections. Remote open meeting law extended to July 15. And remote notarization authorization, I know that a lot of people are very interested in that. Again, July 15. Remote reverse mortgage counseling, same date, tenant protections to April 1, 2022. And also, bills that are still making their way through will also include the outdoor dining and cocktails to go, and I know that doesn't have a whole lot to do with Stowe, but it does in our other communities, and will be important as we move through. Our Opera Spending Bill has been, you know, incredible for us to start imagining what projects we can get done for our communities. We had the great Cistern event, and thank you, everybody, for being there. It meant the world to me, and I know it meant the world to our firefighters to be able to do that. And everybody was just fantastic, thank you all for being there, Megan, Courtney, Jim, and Denise. Thank you for putting it together. So we also, I just wanted to let folks know too, we also got $100,000 to fight food insecurity in our district, and $30,000 of that will be going towards the Stowe food pantry, which you think is really important. I wanted to mention too, we were able to get our, is that my timer?
Sorry.
No, that's okay. The EMT program, we're able to get that renewed, that was a lot of sort of back and forth, unnecessarily so, but honestly, it happens every single time we renew, so we'll see what happens next year, but we were able to get that done. Congratulations on Track Road, another transformational monies that are going to do great things for our town and all the towns in this region. And last year's budget, we did very well. We were able to get $100,000 for PFAS mitigation for a town hall and all of the local buildings. $30,000, I'm able to get every year for ORs, and it's basically a water quality monitoring program, and I always want to make sure that that is happening, is so essential. And we got an extension of the deadline on PFAS remediation and private well sampling. DEP has been very kind to us, and continues to be very kind to us, and they are really making the kinds of samplings that we need to get behind what needs to happen as we move forward too. And I'll just mention briefly that we do have a report coming out. I chaired a committee from legislation passed that'll deal with PFAS and how we're gonna be able to help those. And for me, for you, and so many people in this area, those are private wells, very different kettle of fish, as we know. So that's something that's been very, very important. And we passed an offshore wind bill in the House, we were very excited about that. Our district is called a no-wind district, though I think with climate change, we may see that different as I was walking across the parking lot. It's just great, it advances offshore wind, clean energy, another step along the way from our first and initial climate bill to the wind bill. And we're hoping that the Senate will pick that up. We did pass the Work and Family Mobility Act, I consider it part of the recovery that we are lending support and understanding and thank yous to people that helped us get through. I also was able to pass the Open Access to Adoptee Birth Certificate. I co-filled with Sean Garbely, which we currently adoptees born between '74 and 2008 could not access original birth certificate files, so we have many people in my family that are, would be loved to see that happen. Again, the Votes Act, and I'll send you all the information on that, because it is extremely interesting, and it really does put us head and shoulders above other states in what we're able to do, how we're able to do it, both expand and increase the ability to access voting, which is so important. Genocide Education, the House passed a bill concerning genocide education in Massachusetts middle and high schools, it's a very interesting bill, and I think we'll do a lot as we look at how we want to educate. Jamie was kind enough to mention that the increase in the regulatory scrutiny on expansion of large healthcare providers, that's something that the House passed. The Speaker is very much involved in that, and we're hoping that we'll see that, you know, we will see that pass. And again, the climate rollback, we go back to that and how that began, sort of, how we're moving forward and what we're looking at for entering the 21st century. You know, I will say that I was attracted to this work, because I thought, wouldn't it be great to be there when everything changes? And then I got to the legislature, and certainly I was changed, and certainly I learned a lot. But what we were doing, although it was important work and essential work, it wasn't that kind of century-changing that was happening. And I will have to say, with COVID and with climate change, and with addressing the most important issues of our time, I do feel like we were in that place. We are making transformational changes. And what we do here tonight, what we do here tomorrow, and what we're gonna do in the next few months, I think will be something that will be left for others, even beyond us. But it will be work that is good, it will be work that'll change, and I think it's gonna be work that we're all gonna be proud of. So we're looking forward to getting and continuing the work. And I also just want to mention too, we're gonna be, I also, as soon as we get our PFAS report out, I'm gonna be doing a commission for the 21st century farms, and it's sort of bringing together stakeholders to say, how do we sustain and how do we help the family farm and remain in Massachusetts into the 21st century? And how can we do it creatively, and how can we do it effectively? So we'll be bringing as many people as possible to the table, and hoping that at the end of that, we'll also be leaving some good work, you know, for all of us to continue, so.
The Votes Act and the Open Meeting Law Extension, do we think we're gonna continue to be able to have people joining us remotely, like past July?
Yeah.
Is that part of the, I don't know what the language is exactly at this point, I'm just wondering.
It's an extension.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, my guess it could be part of the budget, you know, another extension. And obviously, there's a lot of advocacy to make it permanent, which I certainly support, yep. And the Votes Act, as Rep. Kate Hogan said, is in conference committee, so we're hoping that's finalized very soon.
Is, I don't know all the language in the Votes Act, is that part of it? Is the, about, that's more about access to voting directly, not this sort of public meeting?
Right, right, the extension, I think, was in a sub-pilot.
That's separate though, right, right. I just think it's been, you know, one of the rare silver linings of COVID is to see how easy, well, I won't say it's easy. Denise made it look easy to create the technology that has really worked for this town. I mean, not every board is using it, but it's really, I mean, you can see, well, you can't see how many, but I can see there's, you know, 20 people on the call.
Yeah, that's great.
So a lot more people than usually would show up, and, you know, in person. It just gives everybody a lot more access, and I think that's really important, democracy-wise.
Yeah, we've learned that at the State House as well. We were able to do remote hearings, and the amount of people and how it increased access was really tremendous. And we do, you know, plan on creating, hopefully, and through rules, debates, a hybrid model that we use moving forward, so.
Can I add something that piggybacks on that?
Yeah, of course.
I was gonna ask the same question. I used to have a very 20th century. I used to have a very 20th century notion. In order to assess someone's credibility, you get a sense of them as a person, you have to have them in the room with you. And so I didn't like, believe it or not, the limited remote participation allowance, very limited that the legislature did in 2009 for that reason. And then this hit and the Republic did not crumble. And we got our work done and more people are paying attention. I think while they're cooking dinner and I even hear rumors that some local officials may zoom into meetings while they're watching SportsCenter. But to stay informed and it really is, although I still believe that 20th century stuff is somewhat valid, the benefits outweigh the detriments, I have to, I have to say.
And that sense of the work goes on.
Yeah.
When we, when I was appointed Speaker pro town or before I was appointed, but as part of that, it was sort of like having to create ways that we continue to vote, creating ways so we continue to have hearings, creating ways we continue to pass legislation. And so it was, it was, everything was about the work continuing and how we got it done. So yeah, I think in many ways, Jim, what you're saying is, is, is so true.
Yeah.
Well said. Thanks, Jim.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Go.
So I sent a late message to your office, Kate, about, um, as, as everybody I think at this point knows, Emma's Cafe just closed as of Sunday, fairly abruptly for us at least. And the last conversation I'd had with Andrew was, we were of course talking about the water situation at Linear, that they have their own, I guess it's considered a public water supply, but it's right, but it's run by them. And then it has, it's had a fair amount of problems over at least the last year, if not longer. And he had mentioned that he had talked to your office or you about it. And I was just wondering if you had any thoughts or what we might be able to do. I mean, because it's a private business, it's not, you know, it's not the town's, but.
I think, what I would say that is that I've been in almost constant contact with Mass DEP over the issue while being very careful about it because you want Mass DEP to use its, the full extent, but you also want to make sure that the businesses are, are staying open. And so over the last few months and around water issues, I've been able to share all the concerns and frustrations of the tenants with both the DEP Regional Director and the Worcester Office and also the Commissioner himself, Marty Suber, who had conversations about what and how and, and what needs to get done. Currently, the owners are under active enforcement with that Mass DEP, which is basically that they have either worked with or are having given a plan and with deadlines. And it's regards to the drinking water and the wastewater at, at the, the Lower Village Plaza. And because the enforcement is active and in process and there's not much I or, or DEP can share right, right at this moment. But DEP has assured me that Linear is working to be a good partner and address the present issues. Whether that be something that continues to be aggravating and also to have the certainly disappointing and upsetting leaving of our, our, our restaurant that we cared so deeply about. But DEP will finalize all the documents regarding enforcement when, when they become available and able to be a public. And if anyone has any information they want to share or feel like they want to share some, some aspects of it that they think are important. I mean, you can get in touch with my office, you can get in Jamie's or even with, with DEP. But because of the enforce, enforcement, it, it really isn't anything that the town can necessarily engage with. As, as select board, I think you know very well, those, that becomes some. But I've also spent a lot of time, I mean, it's my town. My office was in the back and, and I, I had all of my meetings, so many of my meetings there. But I, and I was also able and glad to be able to reach out during COVID and we were able to assist businesses in the plaza. You know, receive PPP money. So we have been looking out, we have been taking care and we have been communicating with, with Mass DEP. It's just a very unfortunate situation. So.
Yeah, and I, I totally appreciate that. I think that that, that's the, the fine line we, we all have to, to walk in. So I appreciate your, you've already done more than I would have, you know, hoped. So thank you for reaching out to DEP for that. And we'll, we'll hope for good news going forward.
But you know, you also asked about, and, and maybe Jamie wants to, to, to chime in here too as well. But I think that what you're doing right now is where we need to go and, and respectfully think that it is, is, is the right, right direction by, I know tonight you're going to be discussing the water infrastructure and a bill that, that are, or funding that will help move forward by looking at, you know, the construction, citing and permitting of a public water supply. That's obviously where we need to go, where everybody needs to go. And I also believe that community development has to be hand in hand with economic development or it doesn't, doesn't really work, especially in a little old town like ours. So, you know, I think always with an eye on how do we, how do we make our, our town more attractive, more welcoming? How do we, you know, that Stowe is just such a beautiful, beautiful place. How do we make the Lower Village also feel like that when we're looking to, while looking to increase small business and also make it attractive and user friendly, especially for those seniors that live in the area. I would also, and this is really my opinion only, so, or what it's worth, as my father would say. I might think about appointing a committee or a working group, those people that have some sort of skin in the game. Maybe some business owners, those who care deeply about the community, maybe come from an engineering background or care deeply and have a community development inclination, experts from the various boards to work alongside Jesse and, and everyone as they work to develop a plan around the water. It would, it would be probably something you want to be careful in, in terms of how everything meets each other. But I think the moment has to be met if you're going to be doing it. There's also, and I'll, I'll just put this out there. Another bold way to sort of approach it is to think about and look at the Business Investment District or the Lower Village. That is what Hudson did. It is hard to do because it asked businesses to invest their own money back into their own district. But somehow it has worked for Hudson. And it would be interesting to see how it might work for a much smaller community, starting with fewer resources and how that might move forward. It just allows for more resources to come to us and grants and opportunities seem to, you know, when people see that there's a bid involved to, to sit up and take notice a little bit. So, so the initial investment and difficulty and challenge and hard, the hard part, which is to start is, I think, would, would be interesting. And there are people that are in other towns that have done it. So, and, and they're more than willing to share expertise and experience. So again, if you ask, that's, that's sort of my, you know, some of the things that, that makes me think maybe with moving in this direction. But congratulations, everyone, though, because I think even starting to take the steps that you're taking moves you into a place of developing a future for the, for the Lower Village.
Yeah. Jim?
Just something I want to clarify and I will probably revisit this later on. What I understand we're discussing later on is a, ways the town can assist a business owned and managed public water supply. And that on the table is not a town owned and managed water supply. I think there is some misunderstanding out there.
Well, I wasn't trying to create misunderstanding. I was just saying, the actions are admirable if they're, whether it is for the town or businesses.
It's the unfortunate ambiguous term, public water supply.
Right. Yeah, true. It's like Linear has a public water supply, but it's a private business.
It's private, right.
If you aren't familiar with it as a term of art, you think it means.
Right. And I mean, thanks to ARPA, right, that it makes it possible. I mean, that you guys helped us get that money come, come to us. So that's, I mean, we, we might've done it a long time ago, but it was, when do we ever have enough money to, to move it forward? So it is.
And I'd like to take the opportunity to thank everybody, Denise and all of the, the select board for, for your work and I, you know, in really being able to articulate where the needs are and, and where the funding would be most effective. And that's really appreciated because it's such a, that is, that is the partnerships between state, municipal and federal government that is so great about democracy. And when it works, it really works. And, um, you know, we're going to see, again, we're going to be building tomorrow, today. And that's great because we need it.
It really is that windfall of having this once in a lifetime pot of money to do such important infrastructure stuff, but it's not the sexy stuff that anybody wants to even vote on at town meeting, much less, you know, I mean, cisterns and, you know, things that we really need. We don't even know how much we need them until, you know, we actually start talking about them. So really grateful for your leadership to get, get that money to here and thank you. Other questions or comments or anything?
I'll just comment on what you were just saying, that I think part of it is getting, getting the gift of unexpected money has made us see how we can prioritize certain things. So that it shifts the emphasis because that money came unexpectedly. So it's just another way to, to shine a lens on, on things that are actually really important to us. We just, they weren't important enough to, to beat a new fire truck or whatever it was that, you know, tends to edge them out of the budget. So.
Right.
Denise, yeah? Not to put you both on the spot, but do you have a sense from the House and Senate how we, or what the feeling is for unrestricted general government aid and increasing it over the governor's proposal at 2.7%? And making it more closely match the increase in state revenue that's expected?
I, I feel confident it'll be higher than the governor's number, but what, what was the, uh, what was the specific, was it 5%?
7.3 is the expectation of state revenue increase.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I don't know, we'll get to that. I would think maybe at least 5% that would be my guess. So. Yep.
And again, as we move through, you know, the governor is working with certain snapshot and then the House will be working with a certain economic snapshot. And then the Senate, and so if things are trending in the right direction, the Senate gets to be the real good guys in that. That's okay, we love it. So. But that's, you know, that's hopefully what happens is that barring any, any unforeseen and, and the economy stays stable, people start going back to work and, and we're, you know, seeing, seeing things solidify. We don't see, you know, interest rates or some of the other more complex parts of the economy that affects us, affects us all. That's, that should be how it goes and has been going, except when I first got there. I don't like this.
That's right.
So I've learned to be very, very, you know, hopeful that, that we will get, get to that point.
Well, I mean, we appreciate that Chapter 70 and the school aid, but we don't see the direct result of that. So obviously UGA is what's important to us.
Sure.
You know, that's the largest amount of state aid because, um, you know, our pilot money for, in lieu of for land is not up there where it should be either. So if we can get, if we can get the UGA a little bit higher, um, that actually goes a long way for small communities.
Okay. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Got it.
Last call, any final thoughts? Thank you both so much for coming, really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And for your, your combined leadership, I mean, we're lucky to have you both in the, in the legislature because
Thank you.
you were people we hear, you know, not just because we live in Stowe, but we hear you on the radio, we hear you in the newspaper. So it's nice to have that leadership here.
Thank you so much.
We try. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, great to see you today.
And we'll keep you posted on, on whatever's happening here.
Yes, that's right. We're, we're one of them all day. So. And Denise, thank you for being so easy to reach out to and over the last few weeks trying to get ready for, for budget. It's been very, very helpful to be able to just call and have a quick conversation.
Likewise, and I know I owe you an updated list, so I will get you that.
That's okay. My staff will call you.
Sorry, Griffin has his cellphone on, barking call time.
Take care.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much. Have a good one.
Thank you. See you soon.
Thank you.
Good night.
Uh, so next we have the Green Advisory Committee.
Did we skip the town administrator?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I totally.
That's okay.
See, I had my arrows and then I just, I'm really sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I, I don't have, I tried.
What about the town administrator's report?
I tried to shrink it because I know we had a lot, but I do have a couple of things to cover.
Sure.
So the most recent COVID numbers for here in Stowe is that we are at six cases. We are at 1.62%. I know there's been talk about the stealth Omicron or the BA2 Omicron, but we are slowly decreasing. We are actually lower than the state average and the county average right now. So that's fantastic.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Update on the Capitol ARPA project. So just so you're aware, the new police tasers are in.
Okay.
And once they have the department fully trained on the new features, they will begin carrying them. But those are in and with the police department at this point. Talked a little bit last meeting just about snow and ice. So just for your knowledge, we are overspent as of today by $39,450 in the snow and ice account. And hopefully, hopefully that's it for us for the year. A reminder, town meeting warrant articles are due by Friday, April 1st. I think I have 56 articles so far. I cringe when I read that Bolton has like 13 for their total annual town meeting, but we are, we will have a long and thorough meeting.
That includes consent calendar, hopefully?
It does.
Because we do have an awful long consent calendar these days.
Yes.
Twenty articles or something.
Yes, I think 24 or five, but yes. So hopefully we can, hopefully we'll get the rest of those. We do have both the meeting on the 12th and the 26th that we have to discuss the town meeting warrant article. So we plan to spend a good amount of time at our next meeting going over the budget and the warrant, but you will not need to vote on them if you don't want to until the 26th. I have to get it to the printer by the 27th. So we have both April meetings to go over articles if you would like. Kate touched upon this. I am beyond thrilled to announce that we did receive the $750,000 funding that Congresswoman Laurie Trahan spearheaded for us.
Jim is so happy.
I'll say something.
Okay, all right.
So as you may or may not be aware, this was part of the infrastructure and Ukrainian aid bill that passed a little over a week ago. The Congresswoman was able to secure nearly $8 million in funding for communities in her district. And we are the recipient or will be the recipient of $750,000. So I would like to express my profound thanks to Congresswoman Trahan. And I look forward to our next celebration where we'll get another big check, if, if for just the day. I would like to acknowledge the great work of our fire department last Wednesday dealing with the fire at Applefield Farm. They were on scene and had the fire extinguished very quickly. So I applaud them for their efforts there. And just lastly, to bring the board up to date, just so you're not caught off guard when you see the warrant article. Brandy Meads Circle is being presented for a third time to have the road be publicly accepted. It was approved in 2004 by the town, but there were conditions for the developer to meet certain obligations and he failed to do so. So in 2010, the town obtained the performance bond to do the work. Since then, they've decided that the work does not need to be done. But went back before town meeting in 2015. Again, it was approved by town meeting to accept the road and no one from the town filed the necessary paperwork with Mass DOT or the Registry of Deeds. So we are once again putting it on the town meeting warrant because everyone up there has assumed it is a publicly accepted roadway, but it is not. So we will go over that when we go through the warrant. But just in case you see that and think, oh, didn't we already vote on that before? Yes, we have twice before. So. That is it for this evening.
Do you want him?
I just wanted to add something on Track Road. Obviously, we're very grateful to Congresswoman Trahan's office for shepherding this through. I still find it just shocking that a congressional act actually has the word Stowe and Track Road in it. Something on Joe Biden's desk had that. But really, a lot of credit goes to when Denise was on vacation last year and she and Jesse just jumped on the possibility of this. We had heard what was little more than a rumor at the time, a, a rumor with a very soon deadline. And they reached out, they did what they had to do. You know, fingers crossed, never thought it was going to go anywhere. Here we are about to get $750,000. One thing I want to say mainly because I'm getting off this board in like six weeks, which is, which is, you can't take $750,000 worth of money for design and then not build. which is, which is you can't take $750,000 worth of money for a design and then not build something. So we, we have to get our act together on actually coming up with a design that we can live with, shepherding it through town meeting and doing something with it. And on a personal note, the little bike advocacy regional group that I am in, you know, Stowe is always regarded as one of the holes. This is the word they use, holes in the ARRT, which it is. Um, and this isn't going to solve that problem, but it is really a step in the right direction. And I'm thrilled for the people who use it every day. I was down there today.
It's a great scheme.
We did everything and there's still people there, you know, a lot of runners and maybe we can expand that to the more vulnerable users.
Yeah.
Who I see on the other part of the trail.
Right.
In many.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It will happen.
It will be great.
Very exciting, yes. Thank you, Congresswoman Trahan, if she's back. Okay. All right, so now we're going to move on to the Green Advisory Committee. So Carol, uh, thank you for joining us. So you have, uh, an article request and then, so we're specifically talking about your article request, right, tonight?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I would like to screen share if I can?
Yep, you should be able to, Carol.
Okay, see what happens.
So as, as Carol's getting ready, people remember that Carol is our, we voted her our, the select board representative to the Green Advisory Committee. Is it working?
Hmm, doesn't seem to be. I'm getting a weird message, Microsoft PowerPoint unknown, system preferences unknown.
That's a new one.
Last time I tried this, it worked.
Carol, let me see if I have yours. Um, I don't know if you sent it to me.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Yeah, I can just show, I can just share the packet.
Page 10. Starts on page 10.
Okay. I can share my screen and you can just discuss it if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Sorry about that. I upgraded my laptop two weeks ago and I can't tell you what. It's like every time I try something different, it doesn't work, we have to work through it. Okay, great, thank you.
So I'll let you just jump in.
Okay, great. Um, so, uh, I was asked to draw up for the Green Advisory Committee, working with the committee, um, a proposal, uh, for an article for funding for the next year. And I broke the funding out into four sort of segments, um, one being general communications, including education outreach to the town through Stowe's Climate Action Plan, specific programs, and regarding methods for things like reducing greenhouse gas emissions, mitigating against adapting to climate change impacts and moving towards a clean energy future. So that's sort of general communications. Um, then there's specific community engagement, um, having surveys, workshops, online activities to solicit input and engage town residents in climate action. So similar to kind of the community engagement that was done, um, for HeatSmart. And, uh, more, and also more, HeatSmart was a lot of educating out, but this is also going to be taking information in. Um, and then I'm going to shift to the right, um, stakeholder engagement. So you think of internal stakeholders as, um, sort of the municipal, um, stakeholders, municipal community. And so we would like to be talking to town boards, committees, planners, managers, other municipal staff impacted by the climate plan, again, to identify priorities, um, who are their, they think should be the target audiences, uh, what are the proper communication channels and, um, engagement programs. So basically getting input from all the town committees and boards and planners, et cetera. And then, um, external community, uh, stakeholders, so community groups and businesses, for example, council on aging, the garden clubs, groups like ORES, even though ORES, uh, isn't just a Stowe group, but to know what from a perspective of Stowe, um, they think is important. And, um, again, identifying priorities, target audiences, communication channels and engagement programs. And then the fourth category is grant discovery and writing. Um, as we take a look at, um, uh, grants, it, there's just grants all over the country and, um, it's kind of a, a bit of a science to figure out, um, what grants would be available to us, what ones are out there, what are the deadlines? Uh, and it seems that a lot of, uh, towns are, are gobbling up grants and so, uh, and there's also kind of a science to grant writing. So we're hoping to get some, uh, funding to bring on board a consultant for, um, uh, grant discovery and writing and then we can learn from them as well. So let's go to the next slide. Okay, so this is the breakdown of what we're requesting per segment. So the first one, communications, the top line is basically time. So there's a lot of things that really don't cost except our time and that's, um, doing things on local press, social media, library presentations, maybe a newsletter. Um, one of the things from, um, uh, Sustainable Stowe, uh, with the library presentations that we learned, uh, in Sustainable Stowe is that, um, as we started using social media and sending, using, um, Facebook into, uh, a bunch of different Stowe-related Facebook sites, uh, we found that our, you, our, um, attendees, attendees were growing, the number of attendees. And also on the different Facebook sites, people started having conversations when we would have something about a library presentation, such as someone said, but our heat pumps, uh, don't work in the winter. And someone else said, oh, we had a heat pump and we haven't used our gas, you know, for three years. And someone else, um, uh, was asking about, um, induction stoves and someone talked about induction stoves. So, so we realized that social media is actually a good way to reach out to the town as, while we're using multiple Facebook, Facebook sites. So, and then, and then we would, uh, see if we can, um, have some library presentations when we're doing education and outreach. So then the next categories, um, of communications is things like print materials, flyers, handouts, art signage. For example, um, if we, uh, end up doing something at, um, Spring Fest to have like a sign in front of our table and we could do surveys. If we do or when we do, uh, education programs and if we do in-person education programs, we might want to put ads in the newspaper like, like, um, Libbo did for HeatSmart. And we actually did get people coming into the education programs from seeing the ads. Um, so, uh, we know that a lot of our printing can be done, uh, through the town, but some of the things if we want to do, um, uh, like trifles, sort of education trifles and those kind of things, we might need to do out house. I got the number by looking at what we spent for HeatSmart for one program and that was roughly, uh, $4,800. And, um, I, and I took out of the stuff that, you know, we spent more for HeatSmart, but some of that was stuff that I don't think would be pertinent to this, that we probably, you know, we wouldn't do. And, and so there are some things like Google Ads and stuff like that, that, that's just not worth doing. So, um, I, I added some funding in for, uh, for example, if we wanted to do a sign or, or app, more ads and, uh, we'd be running more than one program hopefully. So that's where that money came from, the dollar value. Um, community engagement would concern things like, uh, digital surveys in terms of funding. And also, uh, we're looking at, um, an interactive website. This isn't, you know, we haven't made a decision on this, but there's something called Mass Energize that 21 towns and communities in the state are now using and more are, are, uh, coming up on it. And it basically works on a premise that, um, it's sharing information, that, that the residents share information and it's providing recommendations. They, the premise is that providing recommendations from neighbors about service providers and products results in a more than threefold increase in climate action by households when compared to only government, um, availability, um, and, and, um, uh, other efforts. And so, so basically what this is, is an interactive website that towns can create, uh, that, that residents actually go in and they check off the actions, the climate actions that they've done. And, um, so an example, who, a town I spoke with Acton with their, um, sustainability director, and they said for them, what was interesting was they had set up some initial neighborhoods, quote unquote, and so North Acton, South Acton, but then, then some of the congregations, they had three congregations step up and say, we want to be a group on this. And then, um, there was a, uh, there, the Acton Sustainable Businesses Community said, we want to be a group. And others up front said, we want to be a group. And, um, uh, so what happened is these groups started competing with each other, like, hey, we've done more heat pumps than you guys have. And so it's basically, they're, it's generating interest in the community. People are interacting with the website and, and it's, uh, this feeling of, uh, everybody wanting to do more. And so that was one of the benefits and that was a surprise to them. And the other benefit was they are able to get some counts of things. Now, they're not, there's not going to be everything on that site in terms of, you know, you're not going to have everybody signing on and clicking, but there are some things that they would normally have some trouble counting, like weatherization or insulation or whether someone's bought an induction stove. And because people are clicking this off, they're getting numbers and counts that they could have never gotten otherwise. So apparently this, uh, there's a bunch of towns around us, Concorde is using it now, uh, Wayland is using it now, um, there's a few more, but there's 21 across the state. And, uh, the towns are feeling that is very successful. So it's something we want to look into, um, to, um, to, to potentially use, use its with the, and it's not, it would not be a Green Advisory Committee website. It's, it's a website that the town people interact in and, and, um, we could initially set it up, but it's not like us promoting Green Advisory Committee. So that's what that is. Um, for internal and external stakeholders, um, our, our municipal and non-municipal communities, uh, one of the things we want to do is make sure that we have a good climate action plan document that we can, uh, hand out to these groups when we meet with them and set up presentation and interview packets. And so, um, that 1,500 is a potential expense for that. And then we're asking for $5,000 for consulting for the funding, research and grant writing. So the total request, uh, is for 15,000. Next slide. And then this is, uh, basically what the wording of the warrant article is and, um, uh, Denise, I never, uh, heard back from whether you had any changes to that or not, but, uh, let me know.
I don't.
So basically it was crafted based on, uh, other warrant articles. So it's to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $15,000 or any other amount to be expended by the Green Advisory Committee in the execution of duties, including the development of a climate action plan for the town or taking any other action relative thereto. And then the bottom is just a description of when the Green Advisory Committee was, uh, formed and, or what our mission is. So any questions?
Do we say, or any other amount to be expended? Well, that's how the old warrant articles were and then we removed that because we make the article match pretty much the motion so that you could just move the article. So it'll, it'll just say $15,000.
Okay.
Okay. Carol, I had a question on the, on the, um, the website, which actually sounds sort of intriguing. Is, is it also, it's, I, I hear the part about it sort of gets people interacting with each other, but is there also data that can be taken off of that from the answers that people give you?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what, um, Act, we're, Act, Acton's, uh, uh, you know, adding up the numbers.
Okay, so, so you would, but your group.
The interactive checkoff stuff. If, if, if the Green Advisory Committee wants to, is having a forum, we could announce it there. Or there's, uh, actually, um, you could put, put up information on products and services. This, it's a pretty interactive website and it's an educational website as well.
Well, what I was concerned about was that you, at the end there, you said it wouldn't be your website and I actually want it to be your website because we don't have people in town. I mean, that's why we have you guys to, to make use of any data that comes from there. I mean, someone's got to take that in and, and see how it might help us, you know, weapon.
Sure, sure. I guess what I meant by that is originally, the, one of the things we had on this before I spoke with Denise was a Green Advisory Committee website. And Denise, um, clarified for me that, that town committees can't have their own website.
Right.
So it's not that. It wouldn't be a Green Advisory Committee website in that sense, but the Green Advisory Committee would be the people to manage it and run it.
And theoretically, like a link from the page or something?
Yes.
From your page on the website. Right, okay. Questions, comments?
I get it, I support it.
Okay.
Yep.
No other questions?
Nice, nice presentation.
Yeah, very good.
Yes, thank you.
Makes sense and, uh, and I support it as well.
Well, thanks for your help Denise and for meeting with me.
You're welcome.
Can I ask what the next steps are? What do I need to do with this?
Well, we're gonna, we will, um, we're gonna, we have a motion to approve the article and unless there was wording changes, it would go, I mean, Denise has the wording for the, for the warrant. And, and, you know, I, I mean, it just, I mean, basic is that once there's warrant articles, when the finance committee has its public hearing, usually someone from each proposed warrant article goes to speak to it. And.
I'm sorry, I have a question too and it's only because, um, the motions that we have, um, also, uh, refer to the municipal fossil fuel policy. Were you presenting on that tonight? Carol or no?
Yes, yes, that's, um, John Sandramano will be presenting on that.
Okay. Well, why don't we, um, let's do what? Do one at a time?
It's okay.
Or do, let's, okay.
I think one at a time, yeah.
Yeah. So why don't you make the motion on the article?
Okay.
And the one, the.
On the first one.
The first one.
Um, I move to approve the article for annual town meeting as presented tonight by the Green Advisory Committee, supporting funding for development of a community action plan on climate and environmental issues.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, that's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. So John, you've got a, some information. We didn't have anything in our packet on fossil fuel policy.
Yeah? Can you, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, uh, thank you for letting the, uh, have the floor here. Um, I am a member of the Green Advisory Committee. As Carol indicated, we've, we've got, we've been started since, uh, September, um, working on a number of goals, including a climate action plan. As we got going, looking, we saw something important, something that we feel, um, the board, uh, would like the board to consider adopting a policy, uh, now, not, not waiting for our, our climate plan. I, um, just going to, going to talk a little bit about why I think this is important. And then I will, I will allow, you know, uh, time, um, for the board to consider the actual wording and the actual policy proposal. All right, so, um.
Sorry, can I just say one thing? I, so I'm not loving that I'm seeing this in a meeting and I didn't see this information ahead of time. And I'm feeling really on the spot about this.
Well, we don't have to vote tonight. And this could, we could just look at this as a presentation.
So, sorry, so the motion that's, that's in front of me is that we are meaning to do that. So I just, I don't, this is all new information and so I don't feel like that's how it was presented to me, is that it was going to be new information, that I wasn't going to have time to review ahead of time. So that's.
Right.
That's my only concern with this now is it's all.
Yeah.
It's all new and so.
I'm, I'm not intending on, on taking a motion for a vote tonight because we need to get feedback from other people.
I had the same impression as Megan because of the proposed motion.
Well, I didn't write the motion.
I feel a little bit better after having heard that. I'd like to go forward and hear what is in mind.
Yeah.
Cause I think I have some feedback.
Right. And there might be other people we want to get feedback from.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I, I think you should.
I, I only have what's in front of me.
Right.
I don't, I'm, I'm not privy to anything else, so.
Well, no, I didn't know that, I mean, we didn't know. We didn't know.
Yeah, it did not come in before the package.
Okay.
Before the agenda was posted. That's why you don't have it.
Okay.
So the fact that it's on the motion sheet, it doesn't mean I knew about it or that even Denise-
Okay, I just, I'm-
Yeah. So, so John, go ahead and we, we will ask questions and we'll probably, we'll take this up at another time in terms of, uh, a vote on it.
Yes, that's my understanding thing. So I, I had missed the, the deadline. I didn't know the deadline was Thursday. I, I had something on Friday. So that's why you didn't have it in your, in your packet. So, a, as, as starting off, what, um, why, um, why we're all in this? Why the, our, um, our, our climate, our, our green action, uh, the green advisory, uh, committee is, is driven? A key thing is the, the state law that passed in March, um, that it was, it put down in writing, um, that greenhouse gas emissions should be reduced by 50% by 2030 and achieve net zero 2050. This was, uh, I think those are based on 1990 baseline for the state. And so we say, what does that mean for Stowe? Arnie Epstein and others, uh, created a greenhouse gas inventory for the town. They saw that 50% of that greenhouse gas was from buildings, uh, homes, homes, uh, private homes, buildings municipal. And then looking at those building emissions, uh, 90% are from oil and gas. I, I think, uh, Stowe has a lot of, uh, homes heated with oil heating. So as you look forward, you say, well, how are we going to reduce? How are you going to get tho, that total down? People who have a, a working heating system will, someday that'll need to be re- replaced and have a consideration for upgrading and changing. But that transition would be slow, even if, if, uh, if only it's certain, even if a good percentage of people, as their heating system wears out, needs re- replacing. And so it was apparent then that it's like, well, we have to make sure we, we promote this, uh, a transition to heat pumps faster. When just doing, if it's like a math equation, um, we know that there's, uh, three major developments that are in, in process. I, I think of them as the Stowe acres and, uh, something probably at Athens Lane and a, and a multi-building complex of what's now the Bose facility. And as our committee looked at this, we said, well, if, if we don't do anything and those buildings get built with, say they get built with gas heat, um, you know, by the time those ever get a chance to be, uh, converted, it'd be 2050. You know, you'll, you'll, you'll never had a, have a chance. So we've been working, uh, with, uh, developers and, and having discussions, trying to encourage, um, a green energy get used for those developments. We, we can't re- require it, but we, we want to suggest it and, and promote how it, it could be a selling point. But we feel that it's, if, if now, where does the, the town stand? If, if the town were to build another building and do it with gas, we probably wouldn't choose oil heat, but if you did it out of, did it with a gas heating, well, it's, it's, it's like, well, it seems like we should be setting an example. If we're going to ask developers and say, Stowe is a green community, um, not only we have participants in Green Communities Act, but we're a green community, we want to be able to think towards 2030 and 2050. That the, the town therefore should, should set that e- example. We, um, looking at, just thinking about, about heat pumps, um, some conceptions, misconceptions, if you build a brand new building and you put traditional, say, gas heat, and then you put an air conditioning system, if you did that with heat pumps, there's no cost, there's a cost advantage to doing with heat pumps. Heat pumps do both, uh, heating and cooling. Operating costs for a heat pump system is going to be better than a gas system. It's going to be better, uh, because of the efficiency and, uh, at least for the foreseeable future, our Hudson Light and Power, uh, municipal power source has a very attractive cost. So it's, um, it's, shouldn't think of it as a sacrifice, um, that the, the insulation cost and operating cost are, the insulation cost should be the same or lower, the operating cost should definitely be lower. We also, again, assuming that gas is an alternative, with the, what's happening in the world today, gas prices could, could go up. You know, we're, you're now sort of, um, dependent on what happens nationally, internationally, the gas prices are unpredictable. So what, what about, you know, really Stowe, Stowe impact? I, I got to chat with, uh, the capital planning committee and indeed, right now, there are no major new buildings. There are major renovations. Um, as we know, the under consideration is the library and the, um, uh, town hall, if that were to go forward. There could be some renovation of the highway, barn, maybe to 2030. So we, we wanted our, uh, the mo, the policy change is, says, we want to have the town not put new gas oil, not put new fossil fuels for new buildings, but as well for major r- renovations. And again, those examples such as the library, such as if, um, we had to add a new wing to the school, um, the u- u- municipal. So if, if we had to add a new hail wing and it was going to have its own heating system, uh, major renovation and, and again, we would, through the policy would, would come in to say, you have a heat pump system. I spoke to the facilities manager Frank and, and Frank had cautioned that if we had a building, even if it was a new building, but it was going to serve as a, as a shelter, uh, a shelter that might serve during a power outage, that perhaps that would, you'd want to allow, whether it's, um, propane, diesel, whatever the, the backup power is going to be. So that was a bit of caution that we put in the text, so we don't box ourselves in. Similar example is, you know, the recreation commission has, when we had an ice rink, we had to keep the, the pump house building heated over the winter. And we just had a r- resistive heater there. So again, the language was put it out that said, you're not going to be forced to put in a compressor and a heat pump. Um, you know, so it's, with a language says, if, uh, uh-
John, could you, could you show us the language of the, we're only seeing the first slide. We need to move this along. If you could show us the language of the actual proposal? Thank you.
There's, there's, there's a language. And like I said, I don't have the expectation that, that, uh, that voting on it, but, um, there are seven other towns that have done a similar thing. So it's, it's an acknowledgement of the issue, um, a reference to the state, uh, act, um, talk about how we think it's important as an example. And then, um, not putting the heat or hot water, but allowing, allowing exemptions. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. So you'll send us the slides so we have them to, to review?
Yes, I, I have them. I, again, I just didn't make the, the deadline, but I have them with, with Joyce and I, I have them in, um, sent to the select and CD now.
Okay. Um, so, uh, do people have questions? Just initial questions while John and, um, is here? Where's it?
This is huge.
Yeah.
We need a lot more input than this. I'm pleased to see the distinction between new buildings and renovations and age back. I will say this, because I may not have a chance when this comes back. One policy consideration I have in mind is, this is inherently a trade-off between being climate responsible and cost. And ultimately, town meeting makes that decision. And I would be very reluctant to sign on to any policy that says, they don't even get the chance to see it. Now, a policy that said, uh, we must always bring at least a fossil fuel free option to town meeting would satisfy that concern. I could be persuaded that being where we are in climate policy, maybe you don't even need that for new construction. I would be more comfortable with it though. And I think town meeting would be more comfortable with it. But I like the direction it's going. I just think we need a lot more input from people who know more about buildings than I do.
Yeah, there, I mean, there aren't building people on your committee, is that right? Contractors? I'm just, I mean, because frankly, I, you know, this is, it gets into a realm of building that I only vaguely remember from the school project and know how little I understand about some of the implications. So, um, I, I think we'd have to have, you know, whether it's our building department or, or other people sort of, um, well, I think in that, in that point around, and you're, you've got contracting experience, but that distinction around-
I think Arnie knows quite a lot.
He does, okay.
Yeah.
But just that distinction of sort of major renovation, what's a major renovation? What's a minor renovation? You know? How, how defined, if, if we're setting a policy and with what Jim said, I, I hear that too. But, you know, being clear on where we're drawing that line is also really important. Yeah, go ahead, Courtney.
So John, I'd like to thank you for your hard work. I think this is a very nice, um, start. I, I, I feel pretty comfortable with what you've presented. I think it makes a lot of sense. But I'm, uh, I understand the concerns that my fellow board members have. And I think it certainly isn't something that we can digest, obviously, in an evening and, and vote on. But, um, I appreciate it and I think, I think it looks really good as a, as a, you know, at least a strong draft.
I, I, if I can facilitate, I'm, I'm not a building expert, but if I can facilitate putting in contact with her particular questions or particular areas.
So we will, uh, we will have another, oh, Megan, did you have any initial comments or questions?
No, I, okay, I, no.
Okay. So we will, um, we will follow up with you all on this and, uh, and figure out what the next steps are. Great, thank you. I really, and I echo Courtney, thank you for all the effort you put into that.
Very helpful.
Um, make sure I'm not skipping over anything. Town Hall Building Committee. Oh, and look, you were on, I saw you, you were on-
I'm forgetting that John wasn't in here, so I'm waiting for him to walk in.
Oh.
Oh, Jim.
John?
We've got you.
Got you? Uh-oh. Okay.
What did I do?
Not sure.
I already received two texts. Did you hear him say that? If you spend the money on design work, you've got to go through with the project.
Nicely done.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, on that note.
On that note.
Yeah. So we're here to talk about the town hall project?
Yes.
And, um, I, and what you are proposing is your town meeting warrant article?
Yes, but we will be talking about that at a future meeting.
Okay.
The town meeting warrant article, is that accurate? I believe I'm on the agenda for the 12th of April.
Not to my knowledge.
Then I misunderstood our conversation.
Well, we're basically here to talk about where the project is.
Okay. We, we can, we can, in a nutshell, talk about that one. So which one would you like to go with first?
Well, I think we should just, I mean, I, I got, um, several calls to give me the update on what happened at CPC last night. And I think that the issue is, we need to decide, um, sort of where that project is overall and, and what are the right next steps. They, they've made a motion or a, um, what's the word? A motion based on what we just-
Contingency.
Thank you, that's the word, contingency, um, uh, to put, uh, a request at town meeting for CPC funds for $50,000 for architecture. I'm, you know, and I, I've been, I haven't talked to you directly, I don't think yet about this, but I, I mean, I do think that we're having, um, a lot of going around in circles around, um, why is the project not moving forward? The big price tag. And I think personally, what I hear from people in town is, we still haven't agreed to what we want to do with the building. And so it's hard to decide on any amount of money until we know what we want to do with the building.
Right. So following that logic, there appears to be two options.
Okay.
You mothball the building and let it destroy itself, or you rebuild. It's a 200-year structure, 200-year-old structure, the oldest building in our inventory, and it has a glory past. Unfortunately for many people, it's been semi-shuttered for seven years while, uh, folks moved out of it to move into this building and into the community center for their office, office space. So there isn't a lot of current history for people to say, yeah, we did a lot of, we've done a lot of things recently in the town hall. Planning board was a frequent user of the town hall for meeting space. There are untold groups that potentially can come out of the woodwork to discuss the fond memories and good use of the building that they had. But there's nothing current. So a lot of people who are talking about it drive by the building and see it closed up and say, gee, what are we, what are we going to use it for? What did we use it for? And I think, as I wrote you in the notes, it, it is true, whether you believe it or not, that if we build it, if we repair it, the people will use it. Now, will, will they use $4.8 million worth of that building? You know, it's weekends, it's, it's those things that the building has been doing for 200 years. So it's not going to be a new school, but it's going to be a meeting place with, hopefully, the most current bells and whistles to make it environmentally friendly, uh, for the occupants, environmentally friendly for the green communities, um, audiovisual, um, niceties that, um, may or may not have been the best they could have been for the uses, uh, movie night on a big screen versus a little screen. The, the options are endless and I don't know that I want to waste your time talking about what we can do with it. I would rather focus on what we need to do tonight. And I'm asking this board to continue the support that has been shown to the committee by two town meetings, to continue affirmative movement on the project. And I believe you have to, you, I would ask you to vote affirmatively as a board, knowing that you may not agree with it and would stand up and oppose it at town meeting. But if, I strongly believe, again, as I wrote, that this is a project that needs to be brought for the townspeople. It is not a project that I think should be decided by committees when it's, you know, very easy for people to say, no, we don't want to do it. Where, when we can bring enough voters together, those who have used it and those that have an interest in using it again can stand up and say, yeah, wow, it's not going to cost us anything, why wouldn't we do it?
Well, it's going to cost a lot on your price tag, so.
Fine.
But I guess if I look at your memo, I mean, you actually say, it doesn't actually need, it, it's functional. I mean, it is. I went to a Eagle Scout Court of Honor just a couple of months ago. So it actually can be used and is being used to some extent now. You know, the, the question around, um, the code issue is like your, your architect said, you know, if we don't do X number of work on it, then it's fine. It, it's actually not in violation of anything right now. It, it's actually not in violation of anything right now. So I think the, it's, there's no doubt, it's an iconic building, it's, it represents our history. But is it ever gonna be a building that is gonna be used for the things that it was used 100 years ago or 50 years ago? I mean, we have better spaces for big meeting things. It's, I, I'm just not, I think, I feel like what we have to stop and say is like, what is, what do we want to do with it? And then we decide, do we need a fancy AV system? Do we need a fancy HVAC system? And we could say it's open, a lot of these small historic buildings in towns are open for four months, just like our West School, you know? Not heat, I mean, I don't, West School doesn't even have running water. But, you know, you keep it the minimum and you use it for what's reasonable, and we don't spend $4 million, but we keep it standing.
The problem is that the gremlins are out of sight. The basement foundation walls are in disrepair, the footings are collapsing. The reason that the Recreation Department had to leave is because of mold issues. Downstairs is uninhabitable and is damaged. You go down there and the ceiling is falling down. So while you can use the upstairs space as a hall, in the summertime, Courtney can vouch, you need a lot of drinking water because it's hotter than heck. And in the winter, it's cold and drafty. I mean, we're, I don't have the figures here, but we're in the $7,000 or $8,000 a year to heat the building. And we have to heat it because the water supply for the rest of our town buildings runs right through the middle of the basement. So, you know, it, now is the time to do these things. Because if you don't do these things, you're going to be doing them sooner or later, or you're gonna say, let the building go to disrepair. It is.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure, Jim, go ahead.
The, the request tonight is to find out where the board stands. And this is not the first time we have heard about this project, not this year, not last year. And most of us have zoomed into meetings or at least heard it in the next, or heard it in the next room or. I think an appropriate, if, if I may suggest, appropriate question might be for the board members, do they need any more information at this point? And then, if not, let's just start talking amongst ourselves.
Okay.
That's just a suggestion. I personally feel like I've heard enough.
You've had enough, okay. Um, I will ask, I mean, I'm assuming Courtney, since you've been intimately involved, you've, you have enough information, but I'll ask you that question.
But I'd very much like to have the information from the rest of the board and have a conversation.
Have the conversation. And Courtney, and I'm sorry, Megan? Do you have, I'm sorry, information you feel like you need?
No, because I sat on the committee for a year.
She's on the committee as well, right, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I mean, that's, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Well, you seem like you might have questions, I mean.
No, no, I'm, I, I'm, I'm not, because of the various things that happened in the last few days, I wasn't sure where we were going with this conversation. So I think that's an excellent suggestion.
I don't mind.
And I would invite you to start that conversation.
One more thing, I just, I'd just like to say that I think it might be useful for Doug to stay if, if it's okay with you.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not asking him to leave.
So that he might answer or, or, you know, just provide.
Courtney, your voice doesn't come across strongly in the microphone when you're, I was in the other room listening.
I can change that.
Sorry, I feel like I don't have information. I, I can't, you just said stuff that's happened in the last few days, but I don't know any, anything about anything.
Just the CPC meeting, that they, this contingent vote.
So the CPC was asked by the Town Hall Recreation Committee for $50,000 to support the architect in being able to keep the construction drawings at a level that would be current in a future conversation. So right now.
But isn't that, that's what we paid for?
So wait, right now, we basically have a complete set of drawings to go to bid.
Which was the charge?
Documents to go to bid, which was the charge.
And that was the charge of the commit, of, the, okay.
And it was also what we asked the mon, for the money for, and we got, okay?
Yeah, okay.
So that has been spent.
Okay.
And the funding has been denied, the, the request to go to town meeting for funding
Okay.
has been denied by CPC.
Okay.
So now those construction drawings
Okay.
will not be accurate. Those documents will no longer be accurate
A year from now.
next year or in any future year because you get older and the price goes up.
No, 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 I get, I get that, but it's, but they're still, they're not accurate to the day, but it's still
No, it's not.
a jumping off point? It won't even be a jumping off point?
I don't think in this, in this volatile market where we don't know what a lot of things will be like tomorrow.
But I don't, I'm not asking about cost. I'm, I mean, obviously, cost is gonna change.
But everybody's gonna ask about cost.
No, 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 what I'm saying is what he did, and, and you definitely understand this more than I am, so I'm really asking you questions. What the architecture did was drew up plans. And that was the charge. That was what I understood when I was on the committee. His charge was to draw up plans for the building. I do understand that he also put cost estimates in for, or, or I thought that that was one of the things that was supposed to be happening.
It's not just cost estimates, but there, there, yeah, I mean, there are cost estimates and escalations, which will not remain accurate. And so my limited understanding of bid documents at this level, because this isn't where I tend to operate, is that there's a framework within which people bid. And so like if we, you know, I mean, Doug can perhaps speak to this. So there's a reason that this, that what we've been given will not suffice in the future.
But I, so sorry, yeah.
Doug, can, can, can you just?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The bid documents are contracts to the minutia. They specify wall plate colors, they specify light bulbs, they specify all of the equipment in the building. And Don has told us that in this world today, a year from now, the equipment that he's specking in the building now may not be available. And the light bulbs and wall switches may have tripled in price. And so his work will be to update the specifications and the costs associated with his drawings so that the price is current a year from now or eight months from now or a year from now.
Yeah.
So I'm interpreting the $50,000, that $50,000 proposal as $50,000 to keep this plan alive for a year.
Correct?
Yes.
But it was, okay, sorry.
Yeah, Denise.
No, no, so I will just say, and I know Finn's on here, but I'm gonna speak to the CPC discussion last night. So that's not the feeling of all the CPC members. The CPC voted to appropriate the funding contingent upon an all boards meeting with this board, capital, CPC and finance to discuss what we're gonna do with this money. There was some concern by members last night that they wanted something different maybe with this money. They wanted to reevaluate what this money was going to be for. They didn't really, the vote was for two and two because they were not unanimous on what this funding was for. But in the end, they voted to put it forward, again, contingent upon a larger discussion about where this project was going.
So I heard that when I was listening from the other room. But the article, the draft article that's before us tonight, which I was prepared to talk about, is definitely for this project.
But the article that I left you is what they voted last night.
Oh.
So I left you the revised article, and this is what they voted. So they voted for the purpose of funding architectural support for updates to the Town Hall plans and specifications and to conduct public forums and presentations. Because they wanted a wider breadth of what this money would be used for than what was originally in there.
Sorry.
And that's, that was the discussion that took place last night. In the end, they approved it, again, pending a larger conversation with everyone in the same room on where we go from here.
Can I interject something? Which is, it's also pending a, a statement from the Select Board that that you have an interest in keeping the committee together, the, the Town Hall Committee together and moving forward with this plan or a revision. So I, I, we are looking for guidance from you this evening in terms of your interest in once again, keeping this project alive.
Thanks, Finn. So Jim, I'm gonna let you jump in.
You know, I think first I want to thank Courtney, Doug, everyone who's been on this committee for all the hard work they've done. It's been several years, very much appreciated. And, and as I will say later, it, it's an iterative process. And everything that has been done is very valuable. I find myself wishing that I had two key pieces of information that, that we have asked for before. One is the cost of simply bringing it up to code and accessibility. There is a response to that question in your, your materials, but it does not answer the question. There's not a dollar side in there. And I wish that I knew the purpose. And I do not buy, I just have to say this, I do not buy the if you build it, they will come argument. And in particular, when you are talking about use, by using CPC funds, you have to be able to answer the question, what are you gonna use it for? If, if it were just general tax revenue, you could get away with saying, hey, put it out to the taxpayers, see if they approve it. If they approve it, they want it. But with CPC, you are competing with other uses. Every dollar you take is a dollar that can't go to something else. And you need to be able to thoroughly answer the questions about, you know, what's it gonna be used for? And especially this one where there have been periodic hints about not just using current CPC funds, but future CPC funds. Without those two key pieces of information, I certainly could not see supporting this at any time. I am reminded, and I even went back and looked at our minutes, we met on March 23rd, 2021, and considered this project. And we were in a very similar position. The CPC had not approved the primary level of funding. They had approved a lower level of funding, there, then it was 1.7 million, to show support. And we engaged in a discussion, and there were expressions of support for deferring it a year. And that is really what, what this board, I, I think our bottom line was defer it a year. And I know I walked out of that with the impression that in that year, hopefully, the project would gain support. And I must say that I, I do hear many comments about this project, and they are not supportive from residents. The, the supportive comments I have heard have been in, in the videos that I've seen, posted by the committee on the, on the website, that we would use the year to perhaps lower the cost, lower the scope, narrow the scope, perhaps try to develop a proposed use and get some fundraising going. And I haven't, really no progress has been made on any of those fronts. So I feel like we kept it alive for a year last year. And at this point, I, I, I'm really not interested in treading water anymore. And I, I think, I personally think the best thing would be to go in a different direction. I'm seeing this warrant article, which proposes, I think, I'm interpreting it, to use the $50,000 to explore other options. I, I think that tends to be what I want to do. You know, and maybe one of those options is the existing option, but I, I don't buy the argument that there are only two options. Because I don't think we've had a thorough discussion of all the options that might be out there, and that seems to be where this is going. I am reminded very much, I know I'm talking too much, but I, I just have to say I'm reminded very, very much of where we were 10 years ago after we, after three projects failed. And we, we use exactly the same argument you had, Doug, which was, hey, let, you know, let town meeting make up their mind. And we were accused of a lack of leadership, and I think justified, like, true, there were three of them. But after those projects failed, we heard from the advocates for at least two of the projects, the library and the fire station, that this is the only option, the, the only option available to us is to come back next year with exactly these same proposals. And I, I definitely remember hearing that a fire station could not be less than 17,000 square feet or else you would jeopardize public safety. Today, we have a 14,000 square foot fire station. On the library, I remember hearing that we needed at least 2,000 square feet more than the existing library or, and that more would be in order, but the site couldn't handle it. Today, we have an extremely viable proposal that I believe is 500 square feet less. So I'm a little cynical about this, and I don't feel like we've really explored all of the options. I like this idea of a, I guess a joint boards is as good a way to do it as any, or at least to talk about how to do it. Allocating some money to do it is a very good idea because let, 10 years ago, when we disbanded the building committees, we formed another committee and then quickly realized that we needed to hire a consultant. We gotta go back to town meeting for that money, so you've, you've thought about that. Because you don't do anything in this area without consultants these days. So that's where I am. I, I, I don't want to defer again. I, I appreciate the work that has been done here. This is an iterative process. Sometimes you bring a proposal forward, it, it doesn't go forward, and that is part of how you get to what does go forward. That happened at least twice with the school commit, with the elementary school, I think. And as I've said, it happened with the fire station and the library, so this is all part of the process. I think you should be very proud of the work that you've done.
Two.
Want to go next? No, I'm gonna, this is just the board right now.
Okay.
Do you want to go next to you, ready?
Depends if I only get one time to speak.
No, you.
Teasing, just joking.
You're right, I'm only gonna let you talk. And the timers are, no.
So I think the, the comments so far from the Community Preservation Committee and Jim's comments and yours are, are valid. I think our committee has, so we had planned to, and we had, we have presentations that we had started using with Community Preservation Committee. And we thought, I think, that this period before town meeting was when we were going to do a great deal of public education. And so this year, our, our presentations about use and, and about the value of this building were, were not, were developed late enough that we weren't able to show a large groundswell of public support to the committees. We didn't understand that that was going to be a key component in our presentations. I believe that, you know, as, as I've heard, the library is showing a $4 million cost out of their eight for so as the library has, has said that, that about half of their project cost is in bringing the building up to code. I believe that a very large proportion, because our project cost is lower than theirs, in bringing the Town Hall up to code will, will show, I, I'm not the one to give you that number, that, that a large portion of the project cost that's projected right now is, is to bring the building up to code. Buildings are complicated and everything is entwined, and the smaller the building, the worse it gets because everything's on top of it, each other. And when, you know, one system gets touched, another one has to be brought up to date. And, and it's, many things in this building need to be dealt with in order to bring it up to energy codes and accessible, accessibility codes. Many things in this building need to be dealt with in order to bring it up to energy codes and accessible accessibility codes. But I realize also that I probably have a bias because I think this is an important project. I think it's our. Our responsibility. This is the seat of our democracy. It's it's. It's not just a, it's not the highway, the old highway barn. It's not the old fire station. It's our. It's our town hall. And I don't think it's a building we can just drop. We can't mothball it. I don't know how, you know, I don't mind mothballs. Some people hate them. Mold is a is a deal breaker. If if mold is allowed to remain in that building undealt with, it will fester and it will infect the whole building and the whole building will be junk. So time is not our friend here. I mean, it's not urgent, but it creeps and it has to be dealt with. And until the, you know, there's moisture in the basement, it's just a matter of time before that moves upstairs. You know, you get another wet, humid year like this past one and it just creeps. So I don't think. I I understand that it's an iterative process and that this will take a while, but I I think. It can't, the building can't be ignored and it can't just be mothballed. We just heard from the green advisory committee that fifty percent of our carbon. You know, our emissions is is through heating and we have to heat the building. So why don't we wanna make it green? So I'm talking a lot too. You know, this this building is our cultural center and I think that. It it. It performs a different function than the community center. People aren't, may maybe some people would like to have a wedding reception in the community center, but given. You know, there are, there are folks that would really like to rent an iconic, you know, small New England building for a function. And our town hall is that place. And it's it's part of who we are as a town. So if we wanna have our lower village reflect the rural character of this town, we want a certain type of architecture. The type of architecture we're talking about is, in some cases, something like our town hall. And so we can't ignore that building. That's part of of how we identify as a small New England town. And the inside of the building, the feel and the use of that space for a concert, for a for dancing, for, I mean, dancing is. Is partly why we have the folk music traditions that we have in New England. Is is because of of a dance community that needs musicians and that that children go to at the youngest possible age. They go in utero to 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 music and dance events that are held in places like our town hall. And those things will happen in a healthy building. They're not gonna happen when the paint is peeling and it's got mold in there. People don't wanna have an office in a building that's that's drafty and and filled with mice and the air quality is poor. People don't wanna have a meeting there. But when it's a healthy building and it's been renovated, people are gonna wanna meet there. They're gonna wanna have a wedding there. They're gonna wanna dance there. They're gonna wanna have yoga class there. They're gonna wanna have music together for the children. They're gonna have birthday parties. I think we would like to, we, it would be appropriate to revisit our policy about the use of the building. So that it can be rented to one and all for 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 the beauty of a small New England town. And I I'm very confident that our lovely architect can revisit. The the work that he's done and. And produce a report that shows what it needs, what it takes to bring the building to code. I would be surprised if he couldn't do that within the. Within the confines of the proposed sums of money that we're asking, the sum of money that we're asking for from the CPC.
He's in the meeting interested in calling.
Yeah.
Oh, Megan.
Yeah. So I think my biggest argument since I went to my first meeting. Of the committee as a select board member a couple of years ago was that. Despite all of the hard work that everyone had done on the committee, I didn't see a central thesis to what the building was going to be used for. And I think I asked that question a couple of different times in different ways. It's a lot harder to sell this price tag if you can't show people. You have to tell people what they're gonna use it for. It can't be a, we're gonna build this and then people are just gonna come and do it. It's. I think that was the, despite all of the work that everyone was putting into it, that's what never came out. And so I feel like. I like the idea of a a joint boards meeting because I do feel like some more direction. If we keep doing this would be helpful. I do feel like I was often in the meetings like, what are we supposed to be getting out of this? Why are we here? The architect's telling us all about this stuff, but I feel like we're not actually, like, he's doing his job, but I feel like I'm just sitting here and not doing anything. Because that, I didn't feel like the charge of what was. The charge of the committee was actually able to happen. And so maybe that's what it is. Maybe it's a, we all come together and say, listen, you know. What what are, put all the options on the table. What can we have a discussion about? I, you know, I've heard people say we should get rid of it to the, we should put a huge renovation into it. And I just feel like the the, nothing has gelled as to what. The, there's not a common denominator as to what people want. It's either like people wanna get rid of the building or they wanna put a ton and and I just, I not. I'm seeing it on either end, but I'm just not seeing sort of the common usage of the building. And so I I. For what it's worth, I would like to be able to get, either get to that point. Or just figure out what the other option is. But I I I don't think it's worth anyone's time to be spinning your wheels. And I do feel like I sat on that committee for a year feeling like very frustrated. So that's, I don't know. It's what it is.
Good. And I.
Gonna make mine.
I was gonna say.
That's good.
Just, I mean, and particularly to get up from what Jim was talking around, well, a couple of things Jim resonated, but I mean, I think. The request for alternatives has never, we we've asked and have not really gotten a different plan or or a level. I mean, I think one of the things that happened with the library, you know, they looked at three options. Saw that there wasn't that much of a difference between getting up to code and then actually getting exactly what we all wanted. And and I would say back to the school project, you know, we had at least, I think, three failed town meetings. And so the 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 last committee was charged by Steve Duncan, actually, to. We got everybody in the room who had an opinion and we did lots of public forums and and came up with a a solution that everybody could live with. And then it was unanimous. That's an iterative process. An iterative process is not coming back every year and asking for the same thing. And that's what's really frustrating, that we haven't heard anything different except for the price tag goes up. So I, you know, I really, I I guess I I've gotten to that point where and, you know, and even reading. I mean, it is being used. It's not mothballed. It has been used, you know, in small ways. I mean, I know the scouts have been using it for their eagle. It's a gorgeous room. I would close, I mean, I wanted to see an alternative where it close off the basement, mitigate all the mold that's down there and. The idea of moving bathrooms downstairs when they're already upstairs, like, it's a one-room building, you know? Why didn't we see that alternative? So I'm actually, I'm in favor of of stopping over, stopping this process. I actually am not comfortable spending fifty thousand dollars more because we spent almost four hundred thousand dollars and and I'm not. I don't, I don't feel like the town deserves to be asked to ask for more money. I mean, I wanna, I wanna have this joint boards meeting separate from a funding thing and say. Like, what do, what do we really want out of this building? And I mean, I think there is, I've heard more of a spectrum, but, you know, I totally appreciate that some people just don't, don't get what you get out of it. But but I do feel that there's more people than not that I talk to love the look of the building, wanna figure out what we can do with it as it stands right now. You know, that it's a three-month building, it's a five-month building, whatever. What would that cost to make sure it doesn't fall down around us? So that's, that's where I'm at.
Can I just say one?
Yes, of course.
So. I think that one of the, another thing that our committee did, which maybe we could have done differently. Is that as we worked with the architect, two different firms. We went through a process of talking about potential uses. And saying to them, well, this this, here are the uses that it's had. And we think, and and we talked about what improvements those would entail. And as we went along, we made those decisions, no, it probably doesn't make sense to close off the basement. So we made those decisions. And that's partly why we've given you one package that says this is, because. I think we believed that that was the charge of our committee. Go find out what the town hall needs to be dealt with properly and come back to us and report. And so that's what we've done. And we'd spent, you know, and we were not unanimous. So there's just, so I just want people to know that we weren't. I don't know, chewing the fat or whatever it is. I mean, we, we tried really hard to to come up with the best. Way to deal with the building because, you know, does it, do you wanna just cut out half of the space and never go there again? You know, that's happy, you you know, would you, would you shut off the upstairs of your house and just not use it if you didn't have to?
We didn't pop up.
You know, pardon?
That's what we didn't pop up.
Right?
Forty percent. We just shut it off.
And it's used for storage. It's vitally used. I think it's fairly, fairly full. And the last time I was there.
It it doesn't have people in it. It has stuff in it.
And it's people and stuff and they're all, they're in and out.
But it's not a used space. It's not a, I mean, I think the point is.
It's not finished.
But it's not finished and conditioned. I understand.
Yeah. I mean, we had the same problem.
But but it's also, I mean, as Jim said, you know, last year, we kicked it down the road thinking we would hear something new this year and we didn't hear anything new. So I appreciate all the work because I, God knows, I know how much work a building committee can be, but it's also. If you don't get support, don't you then look and see like, you know, how can we, how can we tweak this so it's a more power? I mean, it's a, it's a huge price tag for a very small building when we know that we have a library and we have a high school coming and, you know, who knows what else, so.
This is our how can we tweak this moment?
Well, no, no, we're past that.
No.
Oh, okay. So we're, so maybe we're just disbanded and 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 let somebody else take it up later. Well.
I I don't know.
What do we do?
Well, honestly. Yes, maybe. The best thing we did when the other three projects failed was said thank you to those three committees and disbanded them. Because they had done their best. And then we, some of them stayed active in the renewed effort. And I would hope that that would happen, certainly with the two people here. And some decided they had had enough. Yeah, I mean, if we are gonna go in a different direction, that may be the best thing to do, frankly. It's 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 no reflection on anybody. I mean, this was valuable work.
Yeah, tons of great information.
And I, and I mean, my recollection of the elementary school project was that they had difficulty distinguishing the names of the various committees that they formed. Megan, I thought, had a good perspective on it, which is, you know, right now, people seem to be either in the camp of, let's just get rid of it. Who cares? Sell it. I've heard the sell it. Which towns do, but I agree with you. I can't imagine doing that with this building. Or, yeah, spend any amount of money and just make it fantastic, like it's an art project. That's this proposal, speaking only for myself, is not persuasive. It needs more work. If if this is going to be the the direction we're going to go in, and it might be, it needs more work. It needs certain questions answered. That we, that, so I, I don't know. I'm saying the same thing over and over again, but I do think we need to go in a different direction. I like this if it's with the understanding of a committee to discuss all options and to be fair, that doesn't necessarily make a different direction. This effort might look at all the options and decide this is the best one to do, again, I guess.
I completely understand not wanting to spend another cent on this. However, to Jim's point. We have documents. We have, we have put a lot of money into this.
Yep.
And so as much as. I could say, yeah, let's disband it, whatever. I do feel like we've, we've got the documents, like, we've got what we need from the architect. So now's the time to maybe put this fifty thousand up to say, what do we do with this? Because I think, at least from my short time on it, it would be helpful to have. A more focused scope for the committee. I feel like if their initial charge was to get these documents from the architect, then you've done it. I've seen them. They're, they're great. Now we've got the big choice, right? Now we've got the big like, what do we do with this? And I think what's being put forward is, we've got these documents. If we wanna do what's with these documents, that's the four million dollar price tag. We don't necessarily have to, so I do, I I feel like there's a little more discussion to be had about it. I would love to have the other, to have a joint boards meeting. I would love to really. You know, I don't want the building to be crumbling in the middle of town. I think, I mean, it's, it is a a great building, but. I just don't think it's fiscally responsible for us to just not have more of an idea of what we're gonna do with it. And that's, that's been my concern all along is. I can sell a wedding venue space. I can sell it as X, Y, and Z. I just sort of need to see that that's. I just need to see more of a plan, I guess. And that's, I don't know.
I would not expect a joint boards meeting to come up with the answer.
Right.
I would expect a joint boards meeting maybe to come up with a process to get to the answer. I don't think any joint boards meeting in the history of this town has ever answered a question this important.
Yeah.
In in one meeting. And on the fifty thousand dollars, I hear what you're saying. I really do. I'm just telling you from experience, you're probably gonna wanna hire a consultant. I keep saying to myself, why isn't this treated like an economic redevelopment project? That you issue an RFR with certain conditions, the building facade at the very least must stay the same. The the great hall must stay substantially the same. And ask for ideas, which I think is what they do with economic redevelopment. I certainly don't think that's sort of the answer. We'd have to come up with a solution to the parking. But I I I would be in favor of of starting and thinking about other ideas. Are there other ideas out there? We've not heard from the town administrator.
Hmm, no.
Well, I mean, I I agree with most of what's been said. I struggle with the fact that I have yet to see a breakdown on dollar amounts. I have asked for what it costs to bring the building up to code and nothing more. No additional speakers, sound system, video system. I wanna know what the cost is to bring it up to code, period. I think the voters in this town deserve to see that. I think there needs to be more public forums on that information, and I think there needs to be more feedback. The comment was made, and I think it was Charlie at last week's CPC meeting. Around this idea of fundraising, that it's not about one person giving a thousand dollars, it's about a thousand people giving one dollar. Because we wanna see that there's community support. And I personally have not seen that. I have heard the criticisms. I have not heard a lot of support. I have not heard a lot of support, um, for the folks that have spoken to me. I think it's, you know, I think part of the conversation that took place last night around the CPC approving um, conditionally the fifty thousand dollars was to get more town support, or to see if there's town support. Hold more public forums, um, solicit more feedback, have presentations that really shows a breakdown of, you know, this is, if we do the bare minimum, and I know that that number is not something that people wanna put out there, cause if that's supported, that's all we get. But it's better than where we are today. Um, I think we need to see options. I think there needs to be a, you know, I, I agree that I think last year the hope would be that the project would be scaled back a little bit. And, you know, if we do nothing today and we continue with the existing plans, then they're just going to continue to escalate as cost escalates. And while that may be true, it's still the same project without looking at alternatives. Um, I think I personally need to see a plan for the use of the building. I mean, I, you know, if you open it up, fine, and we, we should look at the rental policy. But I think since I've been here, we've only turned away two groups that didn't meet the existing rental policy. We rented out on Sunday mornings to a dance group, we have Thursday night dance group, we have Eagle Scouts, um, when they have their Courts of Honor, those are sort of the regular users of the building. I think we should be coming up with some plan for revenue generation from the building. Because twenty-five dollars a month or every few weeks is not enough to even have us pay for the facilities to maintain the building. I think that all needs to go into the larger discussion. Uh, and I know it's a, you know, it's a beautiful building, it's historic, I'd like to see it preserved, but I'd like to see it preserved in a way that we are getting the benefit of the building and putting this money into it. That we can say to the voters, we can say to town meeting, these are the plans we have, and this is, these are the great expectations that we have with this building. Um, I appreciate that if you build it, they will come. I think we need some solid evidence of that. Because it is a lot of money. And while we're not, at this moment, proposing to, um, go for a debt exclusion, CPA tax is still taxpayer money, it is still a tax on their tax. So it is still their money in a different bucket, if you will, that I think they have a right to properly vet. And I don't feel this has been vetted publicly. I think the committee has vetted it thoroughly, um, I don't think the public has vetted it. So that's where I come in.
Yeah, I mean, I think just one thing, when you were talking about the functions that there's research you could do on whether it really would be considered a viable place for a wedding, which from what I see, not a chance, because it's way too small, it doesn't have a kitchen, it doesn't have parking. But, but that stuff we could research, I mean, if that was really something that you thought was a viable option, you know, could have been researched, can be still researched. But, I mean, I think that that's, that's part of the thinking about what can we use it for, and be realistic. So that we're not saying we're gonna build this amazing place and then no one's gonna use it, you know? I mean, it's, it isn't, it isn't the same century that it was when it was built and, you know, we just don't know what it'd be useful.
And I will say, the, the comment came up last night, that this board has the authority, if you wanted, to put a non-binding ballot question on the town ballot and ask the voters, without any money behind it, do you support renovating the town hall? And then you will truly get a sense of the town. Town meeting, in my opinion, is not a true sense of the town, it's a sense of the hundred and hundred and twenty-five people or so that go. If you really wanna get a sense of the town's support, put a non-binding question on the ballot and ask the voters.
Why without a dollar figure, though? That seems a little misleading.
Well, you're just asking, I mean, you can, but it's just, it's, it's a poll.
It's just a poll, basically, but it's at the.
It's a legitimized poll that would reach every voter when they go into the ballot box.
I mean, I, I would, I like the idea, but I would wanna have a dollar figure. Cause if, if you ask me, do I like a Porsche nine eleven? Yes.
Well, they could still say, would you support your CPA tax, or would you support your taxes funding renovations to this building? You could word it, but I think if we don't know what the real dollar amount is, I don't know if you'd wanna put that out, but that's really how you would get a true sense of the town.
We could put a range in.
Or an up to.
Yeah, or an up to.
Can I say one more quick thing?
Of course, yes.
Um, so the other thing I, I have been thinking about with this is, I think that we have been thinking about the usage of the building as like sort of the top tier, like, we're gonna get it all the way up there, or we're gonna mothball it. I think that I would also like the idea of this getting it up to code, opening it up, let's see if people are willing to use it. If people are willing to use it, because we've, you know, if it was a tiered thing and we had done a little bit of renovation, and then you've got more people coming, then you've got more momentum behind it to get people in. I just, I don't, I, and I never have loved the idea of getting it to this like multimillion-dollar renovation without really sort of steps, like, steps to see if people are actually gonna use it. And I think we could fiscally responsibly do it that way. I do understand the argument that costs rise and that things cost more, and we, we went around that in one of the meetings, but, um, I don't know, that's another option to, to think about as well.
Well, I just wanna say, I wanted this, I guess it's gonna be a joint board, so we, as they kicked up, to thoroughly explore the one-floor option that the chair spoke about. If, if there are legitimate reasons why you can't do that, I, I don't know what they are, as I sit here right now.
But you'd like it as an option on the table?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, well, and my understanding is, and we could certainly clarify, but in my prior experience, that if you, you know, use the basement for storage and nothing more, then we don't need to make a handicap accessible access to that. You don't need to put an elevator if you're just using that main level. And so maybe that is something that we need to look at, is, um, you know, we, we sort of cordon off the basement and any other area to non, to employees only for storage and
And our town, and our town employees have an apparent infinite need for storage.
So, um, so where are we at? We have, um, I, I'm not wild, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm accepting that we're gonna put some money, and I'm not wild about the language in this, because I'd like to stay away from more architectural work until we decide what we're doing.
So no money can be spent until CPC authorizes that, which they plan to authorize after a meeting?
No, I, I get, but, okay, so.
So we can't really change the language, cause it's a CPC article, is that what you're saying?
Correct, this is their article.
Okay.
Got it.
All right, then I'll just, okay, so.
Can I just say?
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to move us on, so I'm trying to, cause I, I feel like this is like a, this is the microcosm of what we've been doing for four years.
This is new information, and I'll be very, I'll be brief.
Hold on, Ben, yeah, go ahead.
So, there is, at the library, there has been, um, a whole thing has happened, and I haven't been party to all of it, but um, there were historic displays at the library, and I think the library is, is changing and growing, and I, I think our, our historical society is also undersubscribed at the moment, that it's not, doesn't have a full membership that they would like to have. And I, and I think that it's, it's an area that is underrepresented in the conversation at the moment.
Yes.
And, um, I think the historical society and the commission, there was, there was some reason that they were not able to collaborate in conversations about the use of the town hall. But, but that is a, a potential very important use of the town hall. Perhaps not the whole building, but a, a way that the historical society and the commission can do educational programs, have hours when things can be seen, like a museum. And because the library may not wanna house things anymore, it may make a lot of sense to use an historic building for historic education. And, um, that's all I need to say.
Yeah, that's, I've been, I've been totally, that's my.
I, I just have to say, that, that actually isn't new information. That was Bill Wrigley's favorite, favorite solution to this whole problem.
Just to make it a museum.
Was to make it, was to hand for a dollar,
Yeah.
to hand it to the Stowe Historical Society as a museum, and that would help solve the problem at the library. And we got an unqualified, not interested, from the historical society. Now, of course, things change.
The bodies have changed, and.
Actually, I don't think they have, but.
Well, some of them have passed on, so, yeah.
Answers, answers change.
Yeah.
But it isn't like that hasn't been explored.
Right, but I do think that that, I mean, I actually think, cause the, and actually, I think I talked to Denise, that Rowland did this with a, a similar sort of smallish building, and Framingham's done it with its small buildings that that becomes the museum of the history of the town, which would be a perfect fit, but, but we're not, we, we're not gonna solve that tonight. So, we could, we could have that conversation for another half an hour, and we're not gonna do that.
May I make a motion so that?
Please do.
People aren't just left with.
Yay, thank you.
I'm gonna leave the fifty thousand dollars out of it, since we can't.
Oh, Linda was already raised.
Since, I'm just gonna make a motion that the board support the convening of a joint boards meeting to discuss options or a process by which to discuss options for the renovation of the town hall.
Second.
And, and no need to delineate who the joint board meeting includes.
I'm leaving that for now to the discretion of the town administrator to at least make a recommendation for it. I think she can decide who's appropriate for that meeting.
Can we say that again, one more time? Or is everybody clear on what that motion is?
I think I said, we support the convening of a joint boards meeting to discuss options or the process for discussing options for the renovation of the town hall. We'll have fifty thousand dollars out.
What was that last thing you said?
He'd leave the fifty thousand.
Oh, fifty thousand, no, I got it right. Second.
I'm also not saying no, is going in a different direction, because one of the options may be the same direction.
Right, yes, right. Any other questions about the motion?
No, I think that's great.
Good, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all right.
Do you like?
So can I ask if you are going to take up the request for an additional fifty thousand? Separate from the CPC request, is a request to go on the warrant for fifty thousand dollars for
Fundraising.
Fundraising.
So I will strongly oppose that to my dying day. You know, we've, all these projects have not had to hire a professional fundraiser. If, if we can't find support in town to help raise money for it, then that's the answer about the support of the project.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
At the, at the library project, we had the friends wanting to do fundraising, the chair of the trustees wanting to do fundraising, cause she has experience with it, and new blood going into the friends to do fundraising. Again, I don't know how successful it will be, but the whole idea was that it, the support for fundraising was organic. Um, and that was what made it significant. And coming forward and saying that we need professional fundraising is almost like saying, because no one has stepped forward to say they wanna head this up. And that's bad.
I would, I would like to have the minutes reflect that the Friends of the Library is a private 501(c)(3).
Yes.
It is not a town board or committee.
Right.
And the town committee, appointed of, of volunteers that are, that are, um, employees of the town, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable heading up a fundraising organization for a town building as a, as a, an employee of the town.
No.
That seems, that seems circular to me.
No, you shouldn't be, and just like the trustees.
Friends aren't on the building committee.
But there could be.
Right.
It's easy. You, you go to Boston to the Secretary of State's office, you pay a fee, you file the organization, the arts organization.
Would you like to be a member of the committee?
No.
Thank you.
Because, no, what we're, what I'm saying is, apparently no one's stepping forward to say, oh, I'll go form a Friends of the Town Hall. And that, that is significant.
It is.
Right, yeah, we had a group that created recess to raise money for the school project. I mean, pretty much every project, I mean, and most of the CPC things that they look at, there's been, you know, whether it's still Conservation Trust or whoever have, there's people who wanna support it. And that's how they demonstrate support, by raising money on the side, so, um, it's just, yeah.
Ben has a follow-up.
Oh, yes, Ben, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, um, uh, just following through, through with our, um, search for a little guidance, um, I will take it that, um, we will, uh, review that request for fifty thousand dollars, and it, it doesn't have a home right now, and it doesn't sound like there are immediate plans for a consultant to look at the more programmatic aspects of the project. In which case, we probably are going to, uh, pull that particle. And, you know, we do have some administrative funds in CPC, maybe the, uh, select board would kick in some if we reach the point where we felt like there was need for a professional to help, you know, work out some of these more strategic issues. So, um.
I was wondering, based on what Jim had said earlier about sort of the parameters of CPC funds, if, if it's not, I mean, is the fact that it's a historic building enough to use CPC funds even if we don't know what the purpose would be? Cause, cause this is essentially saying what's gonna be funds to help us figure out what to do with it.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know this, the real nitty-gritty of how, how the parameters are, but from my point of view, if it's, if it's work towards, let's say, a consultant looking at the strategy of preservation is as legitimate as an architect looking at the, the, the actual physical aspects of preservation.
Got it.
So, that's, that's how I feel about that.
There's money there, though.
They, they need, I have more experience with, uh, how the CPA has been managed in other communities.
Well, I, I think that looking at the language that was voted last night, I think perhaps if, if CPC were to just remove the word architectural, um, for the purpose of funding support for updates of the town hall plans and specifications, and to conduct public forums and presentation, would give you a broader scope of what that support is. So it might not be an architect, it may be a consultant, and I would say that would fall under providing support for updating the plans and specifications.
Okay.
Now, yeah.
Now, that, that of course does mean putting more money into the town hall project, but, um, I think our committee will, will, will support that, um.
If, if, if I may.
Yes, sorry.
I don't know if Vince understands exactly what mine was. I thought we were leaving the decision about whether to put money towards this exploration of options
Right.
up to CPC and the town administrator.
Right, and I think he's just getting clarification, I mean, we're not, we're not going to that.
Again, I'm just clarifying that.
Right.
Making sure you know that's where, where we are heading next.
I think the only thing that, I mean, wha- what is clear from this board's discussion, I think, is any money that is spent on this is not for the purpose of keeping the current project alive, it's for the purpose of exploring all options. And the current project may be one of them. Right?
Yeah, that's how I understood it.
Yes, yep, right.
And, yeah, I think we can put together something with, uh, at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right.
Um, so we're in agreement, we're not gonna move on the, uh, the fifty thousand fund dollars fundraiser?
Do we need a vote? Cause I feel like we're not all in consensus.
Okay.
Oh, we can, yeah.
I don't, Courtney, I, I don't wanna speak for you, but.
No, that's right.
Are you?
I was just gonna do, no.
I think I'm outvoted, so it's, it's totally, oh, it's moving.
No, 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 I, yeah, but I mean, if you wanna be on the record, it's worth, it's worth it, it's worth going forward, absolutely.
Yeah, it's worth going forward. Well, I, 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 uh, sure, let's have a vote.
Okay.
You, do you want to make the motion?
I'll, I'll make, um, I'll make, um, for purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion for, um, I'm trying to find the exact line.
It's on page fourteen.
For the, um, to su- to support, uh, fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of providing a consultant to the Town Hall Restoration Committee for the purpose of grant and fundraising opportunities. For the pursuit of grant and fundraising opportunities.
Second, all in favor? Uh, we're gonna take a roll call. Uh, Courtney, Courtney, aye, uh, all against, uh, nay.
Nay.
Jim, Jim, Megan?
Yep.
Ellen says no. So it is not passed, uh, one to three. Okay, ready. Okay. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, um, so now we're on to the ARPA requests.
Thanks for saying that.
So, Denise is, is speaking for these, she's talked to all the staff and she has made the recommendations, so we're, we're, if there's questions about them, I guess we just go through them and see, should we, how did, how did you write, the vote is for all of them. So, why don't we just, if there's specific questions on each one, I think that maybe is the most, we've heard about some of them to some extent, I think. But I'm just, I'm just gonna list them one at a time and see if you have questions about them. Is that okay to do it that way, since there was a lot of material in the package?
Yes.
Um, so the first one's the forty-five thousand seventy, boy, it's up, boy, it's getting late, forty-five thousand seventy dollars for the community gardens accessibility and trails. Any comments, questions, no?
No.
I think it's totally exciting.
Sounds great.
Um, ten thousand dollars for school zone safety lights, hurrah.
Thank you. Sure, there's gonna be a lot of comments on that one.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Loving that. Um, fifteen thousand dollars for the traffic safety policy implementation fund. Which if I recall, that's sort of just for the various signs and et cetera.
For them to utilize engineering or consultant support to implement and present to you recommendations on traffic.
Great, okay. Um, the forty-five hundred dollars for twenty-five mile an hour signs, seventeen signs that will be posted on the, the map that we saw at the last meeting. Was that just the last one? I don't know. Um, and I will continue to practice driving twenty-five miles an hour and going, wow, the guy's gonna hit me in the. But it's good, our roads do not support late, fast driving. Um, hundred thousand dollars for Hudson Road, Route one seventeen intersection improvements.
Which you're working with the developer, like, I. So, this is with us, so we felt it was best that we start the process of doing the engineering work, so then we can work with developers to say, here's what it's gonna cost, here's what it's gonna take.
Yeah.
Um, instead of waiting for a developer to come in and start from scratch. So, we wanna do sort of the groundwork and then present a nice package of what is recommended.
Well, cause then they're gonna have an idea of how many units they're putting in, how many, like, what the volume's gonna be and whatever. Okay, good, good.
Is this, are you talking about the, um, the one down the Hudson Road?
So, it's actually all three.
It's where the mobile is, right?
Oh, it's all three of them. So, this is all three of the developments. This one includes Stowe Acres, cause there will be an impact from additional traffic.
Oh, right.
Athens Lane and Masters Academy. So, all three of those impact the traffic at one seventeen and.
Okay, right.
That's great.
Um, fifty thousand dollars for Harvard Road culvert. Another sexy project.
The flooding.
Just gotta do it.
One by one.
Yeah, right.
Fail.
Uh, and then a hundred thousand dollars, we talked about earlier, the Lower Village Water Supply feasibility study. Which, step one, right?
Yes, and if I can just clarify some of the things that Jim made earlier. So, couple things, so this is for businesses only. This would not include linear, they have their own.
Right.
Private public water supply. Um, and the end goal would, the expectation is that we, the town, will not own it. We will facilitate, we will work with business owners, but at the end of the day, we are not in the water business, we would not be maintaining it. We would help facilitate how that process works.
Yep.
But step number one is to figure out where there's water, how much water, work with the businesses to develop how much water is needed to expand or build or construct, and then help them figure out where to go from here.
I was thinking though, when Kate was talking about the Business Investment Council, how it might be a great idea as we're doing this to start forming that.
Right.
So that they can, we're gonna get the people at the table, um, so that's something I would love to.
I've never heard that before.
I, I do, but I think we should wait a little bit until we actually know that there's water.
No, no, that's true, that's, I think you're absolutely right, absolutely right. Um, I do just, I know from like discussions with Lower Village, the like, getting a meeting with stakeholders at the table is like so important, and if we can couch it as sort of a, this is a, this is what this council looks like, and it was very, very successful in Hudson, and maybe you're able to talk to the Hudson Town Administrator and see how that works. I just, I think the best thing is for us to not reinvent the wheel and model what other towns have done successfully, and if we can do something like that.
I just wanna admit, I did not, I do not know what it is, and I would appreciate sending me something.
So. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I only know because we had looked at property in Hudson, and there's, so there's a group. Um, it's sort of like a chamber of commerce, but it's more the business owners.
And it's not an E D I C.
And it's not an E D I C.
I, I think it's similar to what we're asking of them, quite frankly, is they would invest in the infrastructure to continue to run their business.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, but I think there is a more defined model that whether it's, um, the Mass Office of Economic Development, or quite frankly, Kate and Jamie can assist us with, um, but I think.
I think there's rent money available, like.
I, I, I do think that once we get the report, I think we should invite Kate and Jamie to be at that table to help us with any state, um, support and how to facilitate this and work with the businesses with this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, but yes, we really don't even know what there is for water.
But I do think if we're gonna put this money in, like, if we're doing this good faith hundred thousand dollar.
Right.
Then.
That's, that's a brilliant.
Again, if you, if you get the design stuff, as Jen said earlier, you, you better be willing to get the people at the table.
And for the record, I was talking about when you ask your Congresswoman to go get you a federal earmark.
Yes, you're right, you're right.
Right, yeah, you better hear me right.
You better follow through.
And, and this is, I mean, this is sort of assuming because of that parcel that we bought, that along that side of.
Yes. Yeah.
Um, but I, I, I have to remind us that we, when we bought the land that was once called Cunilius, and there's the conservation parcel, was because that was a great aquifer that was potential, I don't, the distance thing, whatever, but.
Yeah, so, so before I came here, it was a million dollars to run a mile of water main.
Oh, my gosh.
That has obviously escalated, and I think we measured out last week, I think you're looking at a mile and a half is the quickest route to get there from that property. So, is it feasible? Yes, but that comes with a very hefty price tag.
Yeah. Right.
And then behind the parcel that we, we, was donated to us behind the businesses, Conservation has that property.
Right. Right, no way, right.
So.
That seems a lot more, I mean, if there's water.
There are a number of properties that, and they will all be looked at, including the Corn, the Red Acre Housing Property.
Right.
Um, but it's, it's a lot of money to run water mains.
And you know, we lifted or modified the Article ninety-seven requirements about ten years ago.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, was there one, also one Samuel Prescott Drive, like, closer? Wasn't there some discussion when, when, um, Beating House went in?
Something about Deerfield.
Uh, Deerfield. You're thinking, I think, I think you're thinking of Deerfield.
Yeah.
Oh, was that, and there's water down there?
I don't remember what happened there. That, that was, that's also where Article ninety-seven went, right?
Sorry.
It is, and I, I can't remember whether we might, when we included that for modification.
Took us in another direction.
I don't either, I don't recall it.
Oh, right, cause you were on ConCon then probably, right. Anyway, you guys, it's on, it's on the, it's on the list someplace, so. Okay, and then the last one is the forty thousand dollars towards the Lake Boone Dam inspections.
Yes, so, um, briefly on that, and I did make note of it here, so we have decided, um, that quite frankly, we were not going to be able to get anything done this year anyways. Um, so we are looking at a phased approach, we're trying to work with the engineers to figure out what that would look like. Uh, we are waiting to hear on a grant that we applied for, and then we will reevaluate the project to figure out where we go. Um, that being said, we need to comply with the Mass Office of Dam Safety and have continued safety tests done. So, this would account for four more to cover the next two year while we revise and, and look at the plans and figure out what we actually need to do there.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's the list, um, any thoughts on anything particularly? I mean, I think it's, this is just what I sort of was hoping we would see.
Move the list.
I know.
What'd you say?
I said move the list.
All right, yeah, that's right, it's getting late, all right, I'll stop talking. All right.
No, there was a motion, wasn't there?
It was a motion.
That was good, and he's like, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, there we go, great, yes, the benefit, see, it's cause you're here, we're moving along.
Do you want to just say that unanimously?
That was unanimous, yes, that was unanimous, yeah.
We were able to do that because we had so much wonderful supporting information in our.
It was, it was really good.
Absolutely.
And it is just the kind of things, this is what ARPA was made for, you know?
Yeah, great, yeah.
It's great.
Well, I, I feel like other than the culvert, there was nothing I hadn't heard about before.
Yeah.
We've, we've touched upon all of these things.
I hadn't heard about the community gardens, you probably had, but.
Actually, no, I hadn't, except at home.
You're saying, yeah, yeah, that's what I figured, so.
Well, and I want to say, so I was at a manager's meeting on Friday, and the topic was ARPA, and the town of Avon received less funding than we did, and their strategic planning was to sync it all in one project. And over the course of discussion of who's spending what, they, they really started to reevaluate that, maybe that wasn't the best idea, cause you could get so many more things done, instead of just make a dent out of a larger project. So, the benefit to this is we are getting a lot of projects done and a lot of groundwork, um, taken care of for very important projects that, many of which we can then apply for grant funding. So, it really is huge that we have this seed money, if you will.
And I've come, I've come to that, cause I, I was definitely thinking like, let's put it all in Lower Village and just like, but I'm seeing that, that one, so.
Hudson Road, I just wanna say, when you look at traffic, when you look at accident data plotted on a map in this town.
Yeah.
You see a fair, you know, some accidents on our secondary through roads like Harvard Road, Taylor Road, Bucksboro, Sudbury. But the real, the ones that are a quantum leap above all of those are two spots. One is Lower Village, but those tend to be low speed.
They're low speed, coming out of the parking lot or something.
Yeah, your parking lot, um, a big one is Harbor Road at one seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
Hudson.
Hudson.
Hudson or Harvard?
Hudson Road, sorry, Hudson Road at one seventeen.
Hudson Road.
So dangerous.
Yeah.
Um, and so I'm very happy to see substantial commitment there.
Part of it is probably to set the gas station entrance right next to the road.
You never know who's coming in and out, but, but people also whip, like, just think they don't have to stop, so.
Yeah, no, there's a lot going on.
Um, okay, so, um, briefly, and we don't have to make this decision tonight, but we did wanna discuss, and we weren't sure, we had difference of opinion where we ended up in terms of having, um, opening up the meetings again to both, to either the general public, or I, I think we can look at it in terms of phased in, cause that's what we're big on in the pandemic era. Um, maybe just have people who are coming to speak with us, sort of like we did tonight, um, or we can stay the way it's been. And, um, I personally don't, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable at this point, but I, this board, I want this board to be very comfortable, in, including Denise, so. Um, thoughts, opinions, strong feelings either way?
I think having visitors that have business with us is, um, it's nice to see certain kinds of people in, in person.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, appointments where it's important to them, I don't know, there's, I, I. I guess as much as I like having people in the audience that, that care about what's going on in town government, I, I think it's wonderful that we can have Zoom for that.
I, I agree with you, I think, um, sorry, were you finished? I just couldn't cut you off.
I was finished.
Um, sorry, Courtney, uh, yeah, I think, I think I would be most comfortable with people coming who were, um, here. Before Zoom, obviously, it was an equity and access issue where people needed to come so that they could really see, although I guess they could have watched it on television. Um, I feel like if we don't have people who have appointments with us, we may just have people who are in the audience not necessarily contributing to the meeting, um, but certainly I could be persuaded either way, I don't care.
To the extent I had any hesitation about letting the public back in, it disappeared with Denise's report of six cases and a one-six percent exposure rate. You know, I don't wanna lose Zoom though, as you could tell from my questions.
Right, no.
So, I would be, frankly, I'm in favor of all the chairs back the way they used to be. I like this, but I don't know how to do that, um, and, and Zoom, um, let's just rip the Band-Aid off, you could always go back.
Right, I think that's what the motion says, and I think that's, can we, do we need to come up with a number though?
No. That's right. Oh, right, right.
Or is it just like if they consecutively over two weeks are going up or?
Well, I think we just take a vote, if we, I mean, if it spikes the next meeting, we can just change our vote and just say, or just say, you know what?
Right.
Unless it happens before the meeting, that's, that would be the only issue, but, um, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, for the board, I'd need to,
Well. Right.
So, if we put the, if you're all here and we put the extra table, um, it would be limiting a little bit. I didn't, I moved the big table back a bit tonight to try and make room for tables and then chairs. Um, so we could fit a decent number of chairs in here, um, we'd have to limit it on that side a little bit with the second table, but, um, we could fit, you know, maybe ten people back in the room.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's when we have, like, we're talking about having a joint boards, and that could be a lot of people, but I'm fine with people being on Zoom, I mean, I, this technology has made that much easier than it was.
Right, well, and for that, so two things I did wanna say, um, the thought was that is not before town meeting. Um, the expectation is we're gonna get through town meeting and maybe the summer we can have a meeting. And we could certainly use Pombo if people wanted to be in person.
Yeah.
Uh, we could set up down there, or yes, Zoom does work, um, provided they extend it past July fifteenth.
That's true. Yeah.
Then, right now, so, I, and I do wanna clarify, even if they don't extend it, we can always allow the public to participate. The open meeting law is the board to participate.
It's about the board, right, that you have the majority in person.
Which. Which ninety percent of our boards would prefer to stay fully remote, cause it's just, they get more participation and it's easier. So, um, so we can always allow this indefinitely if the board chooses, which I think it's a good option, and I, I like that we have this ability.
Okay. Yeah.
Quite frankly, it saves us money on council and engineering fees if we have someone coming. But however you, I'm comfortable either way, um, I would just like some parameter, whether it's at the discretion of the chair, from me to the chair, or whether you set a parameter that if it elevates before a meeting and you don't have time to vote.
Right.
I don't wanna be scrambling and make the decision to shut the meeting down on my own.
Which is what I was checking.
Yeah, 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 yep, 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 yep.
Um, I would be perfectly happy with it being subject to discussion between the town minister and the chair.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I, I guess that's ultimately the chair's decision, but, um, after consultation with the town minister.
Yeah, but certainly, right. Okay, so, so based on the motion that we had the draft on, it's dependent, um.
Um.
I don't know about it.
So, for all the public or, cause someone, you talked about just the presenters, are we starting with the presenters or we're just doing everything?
I think Jim wants to rip the Band-Aid off and let everyone in.
I wanna rip it, but I, I mean, what do you guys want to do?
I'm, I'm fine with.
I don't care, I, I feel like if we, if, yeah, I'm fine with just opening it up.
Sure.
All right, so, so Jimmy, you have some, how do we insert language about?
Um, I move to allow the resumption of in-person public participation at select board meetings subject to revision by the chair after consultation with the town administrator.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And that's unanimous. All right, um, and then we have minutes. Any changes to, these are the March eighth minutes. Thank you, Joyce. Look at me, I didn't see any changes, anybody have any changes?
Nope.
All right, motion?
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the March eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting as drafted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I abstain, because I'm not here.
Oh, and you abstained, sorry, you abstained, I didn't ask for abstentions, my apologies.
Quite all right.
Um, and then, um.
That was a roll call, right?
That was, that was a roll call.
Yep.
Okay, um, and then anything on correspondence, anybody want any comments, anything we didn't talk about yet?
You.
And hearing none, I will take a final motion.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, that's unanimous. Thank you all. Now we can blame it on Zach for not being here, is why the meeting went so long, since it.